We're good, Joe?
Good.
You guys good?
Call meeting in order. Shelley can do roll call, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. District one, Councilman Reals.
Here.
District two, Councilman Bussner.
Right there.
District three, Councilman Leefen.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Stapleton.
Here.
District five, Councilwoman Giles.
Present.
District six, Councilman Shipley. Is absent, but I believe.
Excuse me.
Mayor Gamaras.
Here.
We have four of them.
Thank you, Shelley. Charlene, can you lead us in the invocation, please?
Sure. Lord, please, please guide us all through our work for the city as well as all of our employees and and our city residents. Help us to deliberate the issues before us to the very best of our ability. Please keep a special watch over all of our safety personnel. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with summary of current events and start with you, Freddie.
Thank you, Mayor. So Charlene's going to talk on some of the things that I that I had been covering, but Charlene's really good at delivering the message. So I'll let her do that. But one thing I do want to mention is I was invited to a presentation of an offer from Southwest Gas to the City of Globe in a fleet vehicle that they had. From my understanding, it was no cost. It was complete. And I could be wrong, but it was an offer to our fire department. Gary, no cost? No cost? Okay. So I want to thank Southwest Gas for the for the unit, the vehicle. I'm sure our fire department will put good use to it. It's a used one, but it's in very good shape. And I understand that Southwest Gas has a program where annually or maybe every other year, they have a policy or a I almost call it a giveaway, but you put it this an application process. And they try to furnish a vehicle to some of the locals municipalities. And I know that another fire department, Tri-City, obtained something a year back or so in the town of Miami as well. So again, I just want to thank Southwest Gas for the for the vehicle donated to our fire department fleet. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Freddie. Charlene?
Well, first of all, I want to congratulate Dave and Andrea Kemp. Dave is our water. He has a new title here now. He's in the water department. We call him Crazy Dave, Crazy Hair Dave, and then everybody knows who he is. But his real. He is the water field manager. That's his real title. So anyway, Dave and Andrea just got married on October the first, so congratulations to them. She was she was very excited about that and told me. We're glad for that. And then we just wanted to again ask for anybody that feels the the desire to donate candy to our almost 6,000 people extravaganza on Halloween night. Any any donations can be brought here to City Hall or to the Center for the Arts. We would appreciate that. There was a fundraiser at the depot this past Saturday night. It was to benefit the Center of the Arts. There were several of us that did the food, but I would really like to call out some individuals that without their help, this just wouldn't have happened. Molly Cornwell and Tom Thompson worked for a week prior to the event. I don't even know how many hours, dozens and dozens and dozens of hours. And it was a great event, and it raised money for the center. And it was really nice community event that we had a lot, almost 100. We sold more than 100 tickets. Also, Holly Brantley and Bunny Kessler were really a big help, so I just would like to acknowledge them. And then I also want to acknowledge two of our police officers. They really helped, were helpful. Not that it was their job, but they just helped because they saw that I was struggling with some of those heavy trash bags at Apache G Day. And the Public Works guys all go and do that afterwards, but there's always so much trash that that I feel we should help them. But those bags were so big and heavy. And and these two fellows, Jeremy Cochran and Sergeant Devon in uniform, they helped empty all that trash. So that was really nice of them, and I appreciate that. I'd also like to say that I saw them out there in the crowd at various times of the day. They were really interacting with folks, and and that's what we want. We want our community to know and recognize our police officers and know that they're there to help. So I appreciate that. And then the library, there's a few things going on with the library. They're getting the parking lot's getting paid right now as we speak. They're they're rolling that asphalt down right now. It's great. It's really going to look good. And there's a couple other nice improvements going on at the library. All the flooring is going to be replaced, and the bathrooms renovated, so they will be closed for a week, week or 10 days sometime in November. So just so everybody's aware of that. And I do believe that that is all I have. Oh, no, I don't. I have one more thing. Clean and beautiful. We're going to do the Clean and Beautiful Mile, clean up the cleanup, the highway cleanup. So if anybody wants to help us, we would love to have some help because there's a lot of trash out there. We're going to do it on Wednesday, November the sixth, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. And we meet down at the intersection of 188 and 60, right down there at the triangle. And I did have one more thing. Lastly, our code enforcement officer, Michelle, has been working with a property owner that has multiple properties. One was really bad, a very bad health hazard, and it was beyond the point of repair, could not be repaired. So Friday, just this past Friday, she actually got the property owner themselves to tear the structure down, so the city did not have to pay for that and then try to recoup the money. So that, kudos to her. It's it's taken a year and a half. It it was, it's been a year and a half since this all started. So I just would like the public to know that she is on it and she's doing it, just the wheels turn very slowly. But one down, one down is one less we got to deal with. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlene. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I went on a tour this past, what was it, Friday, Jerry? Yeah, this past Friday, Jerry and Vince took me out on a tour of the utility infrastructure, the wells, the sewer plant, the well field out at the out by the reservation, and then some of the infrastructure projects that are going on, some parking lots in in the Benita Springs, Benita Flats outlets that they they're putting in there for that problem that I guess there's been for quite a while. I want to thank Shelley and Paul for putting up with me again this week, going through everything that I'm trying to get a handle on. So with that, and then also I want to thank Vince. He worked with a constituent in my district that had a concern. I think it was all resolved. I haven't got been able to get back to visit with her, but Vince did assure me that it was taken care of. So that's about all I have to share.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. I went on a tour of Capstone. They had a municipal tour, and I was pleased to find out that they're working with the Bureau of Land Management to possibly extend that that mine into the 2030s, possibly 40s. And that's really good news for our community. And I just wanted to give John a shout out. Tracy Quick wanted to make sure you knew that she appreciated your response time, that she I guess she had a complaint or something about landscaping stuff, and she appreciated you. She said that you have an amazing crew, so thank you for that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I just have a few things. First of all, like Charlene said, Apache G was an excellent turnout. It was nice to see the thousands of people, I would say, that were down there. I mean, it was packed, and that's what we'd like to see, like the good old days where Broad Street was just unbelievably busy. And I'd like to thank Public Works, too, for all the work they did in getting that all set up. And PD chief, the guys did a great job. They stopped by and saw me a few times and were just filling me on how things are going. So make sure you thank your officers. And John, your crew is outstanding. I got to work about 4:00 in the morning, and they were already out there working, so good job, guys. Thank you. And then a reminder, the Globe Miami football game is Friday, November 1st, 6:00 p.m. Got to get that kettle back. Miami took it.
No comment.
I'm sure you have one.
You just made it.
So I'm sure Mayor will be there waiting for Globe, right?
No comment.
Anyway, if you can make it, the seats go fast. Every time I've gone there, standing room always. So if you can get there, get there early or get your tickets. And then Halloween downtown is the night before that. So again, like Charlene said, if you've got candy to donate, bring it to the center or at City Hall, or you can even drop it off to me. I'll be more than happy to share it. That's a huge, huge night. And then the parking lots, Jerry, awesome. All of you guys. I went by there today, and it just looks amazing to see all the mini lot and the library. So things are really happening. So thank you. I appreciate everything you guys do. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mike. Just want to announce the wine and auction, and I think that's Culver Valley Regional Medical Center. It's going to be Friday night?
Saturday.
Saturday night? And where's that at?
Is it Friday? I thought it was Friday. I'm sorry. I would have gone on the wrong line. It's at the fairgrounds.
Fairgrounds? It's this Friday? So they're putting a lot of work into that, so please come out and support them. There's also Mixer Thursday, and this is the Roosevelt Marina that's put on by the Globe Miami Chamber of Commerce. It's from 6:00 to 8:00. So if you want to travel down to the lake for a mixer down there, they're going to have food, drinks, and some just to get together for it. So it's kind of neat. And I think it's a new marina, is it? The new build, newly built marina? Okay. Thursday at 6:00. And then on the first, right before the Globe Miami game, if you're going. I'll be there. Anyway, the library, the Globe Library's having a fundraiser, and they're going to have a potato supper fundraiser, and it's from 5:00 to 7:00. And it'll be at the Globe Active Adult Center. Yes, okay, it'll be at 578 South Broad Street. They're going to have baked potato with toppings, salad, dressing, dessert, water, coffee, and iced tea. And tickets are $10 a donation, $5 for children. So please go out and support the library, and you can get a meal right before the game and then go to the game. And we have, I just want to announce again, the census coming in 2020. We're going to continue to hit that hard. I went to Rural Summit.
Call it a giveaway, but you put it, this is an application process. And they try to furnish a vehicle to some of the locals municipalities. And I know that another fire department, Tri-City, obtained something a year back or so in the town of Miami as well. So again, I just want to thank Southwest Gas for the vehicle donated to our fire department fleet. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Freddie. Shirley?
Well, first of all, I want to congratulate Dave and Andrea Kemp. Dave is our water, he has a new title here now. He's in the water department. We call him Crazy Dave, Crazy Hair Dave, and then everybody knows who he is. But his real, he is the water field manager. That's his real title. So anyway, Dave and Andrea just got married on October the 1st, so congratulations to them. She was very excited about that and told me. We're glad for that. And then we just wanted to again ask for anybody that feels the desire to donate candy to our almost 6,000 people extravaganza on Halloween night. Any donations can be brought here to City Hall or to the Center for the Arts. We would appreciate that. There was a fundraiser at the depot this past Saturday night. It was to benefit the Center of the Arts. There were several of us that did the food, but I would really like to call out some individuals that without their help, this just wouldn't have happened. Molly Cornwell and Tom Thompson worked for a week prior to the event. I don't even know how many hours, dozens and dozens and dozens of hours. And it was a great event, and it raised money for the center, and it was a really nice community event that we had a lot, almost 100. We sold more than 100 tickets. Also, Holly Brantley and Bunny Kessler were really a big help, so I just would like to acknowledge them. And then I also want to acknowledge two of our police officers. They really helped, were helpful. Not that it was their job, but they just helped because they saw that I was struggling with some of those heavy trash bags at Apache G Day. And the Public Works guys all go and do that afterwards, but there's always so much trash that I feel we should help them. But those bags were so big and heavy. And these two fellows, Jeremy Cochran and Sergeant Devon, in uniform, they helped empty all that trash. So that was really nice of them, and I appreciate that. I'd also like to say that I saw them out there in the crowd at various times of the day. They were really interacting with folks, and that's what we want. We want our community to know and recognize our police officers and know that they're there to help. So I appreciate that. And then the library, there's a few things going on with the library. They're getting, the parking lot's getting paid right now as we speak. They're rolling that asphalt down right now. It's great. It's really going to look good. And there's a couple other nice improvements going on at the library. All the flooring is going to be replaced, and the bathroom's renovated, so they will be closed for a week, week or 10 days sometime in November. So just so everybody's aware of that. And I do believe that that is all I have. Oh, no, I don't. I have one more thing. Clean and Beautiful, we're going to do the Clean and Beautiful Mile, the cleanup, the highway cleanup. So if anybody wants to help us, we would love to have some help because there's a lot of trash out there. We're going to do it on Wednesday, November the 6th, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. And we meet down at the intersection of 188 and 60, right down there at the triangle. And I did have one more thing. Lastly, our code enforcement officer, Michelle, has been working with a property owner that has multiple properties. One was really bad, a very bad health hazard, and it was beyond the point of repair, could not be repaired. So Friday, just this past Friday, she actually got the property owner themselves to tear the structure down, so the city did not have to pay for that and then try to recoup the money. So that, kudos to her. It's taken a year and a half. It was, it's been a year and a half since this all started. So I just would like the public to know that she is on it and she's doing it, just the wheels turn very slowly. But one down, one down is one less we've got to deal with. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I went on a tour this past, what was it, Friday, Jerry? Yeah, this past Friday. Jerry and Vince took me out on a tour of the utility infrastructure, the wells, the sewer plant, the well field out by the reservation, and then some of the infrastructure projects that are going on, some parking lots in the Benita Springs, Benita Flats outlets that they're putting in there for that problem that I guess there's been for quite a while. I want to thank Shelley and Paul for putting up with me again this week, going through everything that I'm trying to get a handle on. So with that, and then also I want to thank Vince. He worked with a constituent in my district that had a concern. I think it was all resolved. I haven't been able to get back to visit with her, but Vince did assure me that it was taken care of. So that's about all I have to share.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. I went on a tour of Capstone. They had a municipal tour, and I was pleased to find out that they're working with the Bureau of Land Management to possibly extend that mine into the 2030s, possibly 40s. And that's really good news for our community. And I just wanted to give John a shout out. Tracy Quick wanted to make sure you knew that she appreciated your response time, that she, I guess she had a complaint or something about landscaping stuff, and she appreciated you. She said that you have an amazing crew, so thank you for that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mike?
I just have a few things. First of all, like Shirley said, Apache G was an excellent turnout. It was nice to see the thousands of people, I would say, that were down there. I mean, it was packed, and that's what we'd like to see, but like the good old days where Broad Street was just unbelievably busy. And I'd like to thank Public Works, too, for all the work they did in getting that all set up. And PD Chief, the guys did a great job. They stopped by and saw me a few times and were just filling me on how things are going. So make sure you thank your officers and John. Your crew is outstanding. I got to work about 4:00 in the morning, and they were already out there working, so good job, guys. Thank you. And then a reminder, the Globe Miami football game is Friday, November 1st, 6:00 p.m. Got to get that kettle back. Miami took it.
No comment.
Oh, sure you have one.
You just made it.
So I'm sure Mayor will be there waiting for Globe, right?
No comment.
Anyway, if you can make it, the seats go fast. Every time I've gone there, standing room always. So if you can get there, get there earlier, get your tickets. And then Halloween downtown is the night before that. So again, like Shirley said, if you've got candy to donate, bring it to the Center or at City Hall, or you can even drop it off to me. I'll be more than happy to share it. That's a huge, huge night. And then the parking lots, Jerry, awesome. All of you guys. I went by there today, and it just looks amazing to see all the mini lot and the library. So things are really happening. So thank you. I appreciate everything you guys do. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mike. Just want to announce the wine and auction, and I think that's Culver Valley Regional Medical Center. It's going to be Friday night?
Saturday.
Saturday night? And where's that at?
Is it Friday? I thought it was Friday. I'm sorry. I would have gone on the wrong line. It's at the Fairgrounds.
Fairgrounds? It's this Friday? So they're putting a lot of work into that, so please come out and support them. There's also Mixer Thursday, and this is the Roosevelt Marina that's put on by the Globe Miami Chamber of Commerce. It's from 6:00 to 8:00. So if you want to travel down to the lake for a mixer down there, they're going to have food, drinks, and some just get together for it. So it's kind of neat. And I think it's a new marina, is it? The new build, newly built marina? Okay. Thursday at 6:00 o'clock. And then on the 1st, right before the Globe Miami game, if you're going. I'll be there. Anyway, the library, the Globe Library's having a fundraiser, and they're going to have a potato supper fundraiser, and it's from 5:00 to 7:00. And it'll be at the Globe Active Adult Center. Yes, okay. It'll be at 578 South Broad Street. They're going to have baked potato with toppings, salad, dressing, dessert, water, coffee, and iced tea. And tickets are $10 for donation, $5 for children. So please go out and support the library, and you can get a meal right before the game and then go to the game. And we have, I just want to announce again, the census coming in 2020. We're going to continue to hit that hard. I went to Rural Summit in Tucson last Thursday, and it was a big crowd and talking about census, and we got some more ideas of what we can do as far as how to promote our census within our community. It's very, going to be very important to us as far as funding. And that's all I have. Paul?
Mr. Mayor and Members of Council, thank you very much. I just wanted to, a couple things. I know some of you saw the, Southwest Gas was kind enough to share a vehicle with us and everything like that. I know that they, we've been communicating, I had been communicating with members of Southwest Gas on the no-cut policy. I think they will be reaching out to individual council members as we go. That will be on the agenda for the November 5th, will be the no-cut policy. But we appreciate our partnership with Southwest Gas, and we've been meeting with them multiple times on this. Pine Street, I had somebody tell me you've got to stop the car to change tire. I hate that phrase, but Pine Street's closed while we get it fixed up and get the rail and utilities are in, get the rail fixed up, get the asphalt. I know that the Arizona Eastern, we've been trying to be more than helpful in trying to get them squared away. They had some hiccups, and we stepped in and did that, and I think that's good for the partnership. There's some, you know, their commitment to help us with some things that we're working on and we're committed to help them. But our Public Works crews have taken some time to make sure that the mill and fill, the repaving go well. But bear with us as we get this Pine Street straightened out. And I know we have a couple of members of Public Works in the audience. Thank you for being here, and they've been working hard. A couple of them were up last night. I saw them, and I know some of you seen them in the morning, so they're pulling some long hours here. And let's see, the only other thing, I ran into a couple from Hawaii driving an RV around Globe. They were, I saw them Monday morning. They were here Saturday night for the bedsticks and broom and the, a couple of, yeah, okay. Sorry about that. I'm the butcher of all names, equal offender. But it was really interesting. They're having a fun time just exploring and doing that. It's always fun when you, you can kind of tell people who, you know, are here visiting because they're always looking around and at school. So I just chatted them up a little bit about Globe. But they had a good time this weekend, so I wanted to report back that I think they were in a couple of the bars, and they were at the train depot, and they saw, they caught the tail end of Apache G. So it's good that people come here and find lots to do. Mr. Mayor and Members of Council, that's all I have for you.
Thank you. I want to go back to Charlene. Do you want to, don't we have the Ghost of Tour this Saturday?
It is Saturday night, yes.
Can you say a little bit about that?
Yeah, that's, the tickets you can get at Eventbrite, on Eventbrite, or you can get them at the Center. The Ghost of Globe Tour, it starts at 6:00 and it goes to 11:00. And it's really interesting. It's historically correct and accurate of all the buildings that we have downtown that are, you know, so old and have such interesting past stories. But they actually have live actors that act out in front of each building, a little skit about the building itself and what has gone on there. And there's actually quite a few, at least six of them, there's been murders, hasn't there, Jesse?
Yeah.
And yeah, there's, it's a great, fun evening event, and the old fire truck will take you around if you don't want to walk the whole, it's quite, it's quite some distance all the way down, starting at the, it starts at the Center for the Arts and then goes all the way down to the drift and back all the way around. So the old fire truck manned by our firemen will haul you around if you don't want to walk from stop to stop. So it's a good thing. It's $20 a ticket, and the, all the money goes to the jail, our 1910 jail. It goes to the restoration fund, so we're trying to fix that up because it's a really great tourist attraction we have. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, I'm going to take the city manager privilege and a couple of things I missed. I know we have the car rally is in town Saturday morning, and it'll be in front of the firehouse and, two of them, yeah. And so, and then we have Oktoberfest up at.
Oktoberfest is Saturday as well, yeah.
Yes. And.
That starts at 8:00. That's from 8:00 to 11:00.
Yes, things going on.
And then I forgot my shameless plug. The Rotary is having a nighttime presentation meeting at the Active Adult Center with Judge Riordan is going to be speaking to the Rotary, but all people are invited to come and hear Judge Riordan's comments at the, that'll be at 6:00 at the Active Adult Center, sponsored by the Rotary.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow night. Thank you. It takes two to do a.
We've got to get all these events done. There's a lot going on in this little town.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go first, community call to the public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that is not scheduled on this agenda may do so at this time. Comments will be addressed to the council as a whole public body. Council is prohibited from responding to any comments, but may direct staff to follow up. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please complete a request to speak card, and they're located at the back of the room here, and turn it in to our clerk. And also, if you want to speak on an agenda item that's on for tonight, you can also fill out a request to speak card, and you can be acknowledged then. So I do have two of them. First one I have is Hila County ADH Tobacco Squad.
Anti.
Anti, I'm sorry, Anti Tobacco Squad. If you guys want to come up to the mic and identify yourselves and.
Pull that mic close and forward in your outside voices.
So my name is Shanae Casillas. I work for the Hila County Health Department under the Tobacco-Free Environments Program. I'm also the adult leader for the Globe and Miami Anti Tobacco Squad at both high schools.
My name is Angela Valverde. I am the president of our little Anti Tobacco Squad. I'm a junior in high school and, what was I supposed to say? And I'm pretty much representing our Miami High School.
I am JJ. I am a sophomore, and I'm a member of the Miami Anti Tobacco Squad.
I'm Caitlin, and I'm a junior, and I'm the president for the Globe. These are my Globe girls. And that's.
I'm Mackenzie Freeman, and I'm a member of the Globe Anti Tobacco Squad.
My name's Christina Freeman, and I'm part of the Globe Anti Tobacco Squad.
Some background on our squad. This past year, we did several different community service projects, such as the Santas for Seniors that benefited the seniors at Haven of Globe. And then we also did Operation San Miami High School. They will also be continuing Santas for Seniors this year for Haven of Globe. In July, they threw the October 31st. Red Ribbon Week serves as a method and opportunity for communities and individuals to take a stand against drug abuse and educate others on its destruction.
We are hoping that by passing this proclamation, we can encourage our peers to be drug-free with the support of our community.
Thank you very much. And Paul, we can get that on the next agenda for proclamation for Red Ribbon Day?
Mr. Mayor and Members of Council, yes, we will. November 5th.
Can I address them? Can I address them? Oh, call the public.
Yes, call them.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
We actually have some gifts for you guys that our leader, Shanae, has came up with. So my, me and my, so my teammates will be handing them out.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and Members of Council, and just a reminder to the audience, call the public. The council can't respond, but I know when this is back on the agenda, we'll have lots to share. So thank you again for coming and presenting to us, and we will see you back here in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have another card.
Thank you for your time. I have some concerns and questions about the gas line project going on over on Skyline Drive, and I think up 6 Uter Canyon. Writing on those repairs they're making is very aggravating. I'm wondering if the contract with this contractor has a clause in it to specify what's expected of the repairs after they dig holes in the pavement and patch it up. They're just, it's unacceptable. It's terrible. So I'm wondering, does a contract call for that? Is it specified that it has to be smooth with the rest of the pavement or whatever? And the second question is, is there a retention in their contract to hold their feet to the fire, so to speak, so that they, their final payment is after the road, everything's been inspected and approved by city engineer, I guess? So, and I guess the other question would be, who inspects? Is it the city engineer or somebody else? So I was, I had those questions about that contract that went on.
Mr. White, we can't respond to you, but I direct you to talk to our city manager, our Public Works Director, Jerry Barnes, and they have those answers for you.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor and Members of Council, we do have the no-cut policy, which is kind of overlaps with this, and so we will share information tonight, but also bring back information to council in response in two weeks as part of the no-cut policy.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. White.
Jerry, raise your hand.
So we'll go to special presentations and ceremonial matters. Item A, we have VFW Buddy Poppy Proclamation, November 8th and 9th. And we have Commander Anthony Hernandez and Angie Maury, Auxiliary Strike Secretary, representing.
Anthony, Maury, I'm representing.
Okay. I'll go ahead and read that proclamation, then I'll turn it over to you. The annual distribution of Buddy Poppies by the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States has been officially recognized and endorsed by governing leaders since 1922. And whereas VFW Buddy Poppies are assembled by disabled veterans, and the proceeds of this worthy fundraising campaign are used exclusively for the benefit of disabled and needy veterans and the widows and orphans of deceased veterans. And whereas the basic purpose of the annual distribution of Buddy Poppies by the Veterans of Foreign Wars is eloquently reflected in the desire to honor the dead of helping the living. Now therefore, I, Algemeros, Mayor of City of Globe, do hereby urge the citizens of this community to recognize the merits of this cause by continuing generously to its support through your donations for Buddy Poppies on the day set aside for the distribution of these symbols of appreciation for the sacrifices of our honored dead. I urge all patriotic citizens to wear Buddy Poppy as mute evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in the defense of the freedoms which we continue to enjoy as American citizens and proclaim November 8th and 2019 as VFW Buddy Poppy Days.
Y'all so welcome to the public, to the Veterans Day in the park here, and the dinner afterwards down at the post on the VFW.
What time is your presentation on Veterans Day?
11:00.
11:00, okay.
11th month, 11th hour, 11th day.
Okay. Thank you, and here's a signed copy. Item B, we have presentation by Copper City's youth sports punchers tackle football and cheer to John Angulo, City of Globe Public Works Department in appreciation of support during the 2019 season.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It is my honor to invite up the Punchers Football and Cheer members that we have in the audience. This is my husband, Richard Kruger. He is the coach for the fifth and sixth grade team, along with Ruben Mariscow. And this is, this is my son, Grayson Kruger, and my daughter, Mia. And this is Ruben's son, Hector. And who's going to speak?
Nice uniform. All right.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. Real quick, these guys are not Globe, they're not Miami, they're Globe Miami and San Carlos. This year, we had 105 kids come out. First year for cheerleading, 24 girls came out to cheer. We received a lot of compliments from other teams that they couldn't tell who was home and who was away because we have such a strong parent involvement. Lots of kids come from separated homes, and both parents come out to the games and support, and it's just really neat to see. We appreciate the help using the field and maintenance of it. We did our best to maintain it. These guys do a lot of work in the community. You're going to see them do two food drives, one in November, one in December. They're also going to be helping ring the bells. They're going to do stuff that will benefit our community that won't go elsewhere. They work in the community, and they're just very proud kids. We just want to thank Mr. Jerry Barnes and John Angulo for what they've done for us, allowing us to use the fields. We have a plaque here for John and a little goodie bag if you can come up and, or we can take it to you, one or the other. And the kids have bracelets for the members. And our colors are copper and turquoise, fitting that that's what our community is. So, thank you very much.
Man, their name and everything on there.
Nice.
When I coached, we had to use t-shirts and put our own names with a permanent marker.
I have it.
Go Punchers!
Thank you.
Thank you, girlfriend.
That's neat. Mayor?
Yeah.
Mayor?
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you, but also, like I said, my name's on it, but like I said, I thank our Public Works crews for all the work that they do, but also to invite anyone that's ever not been out to their games. I've got two nephews that go and play, and it's really tremendous to see the group support that they actually share out there. So I think it's really good for our community.
Thank you, John. Item C, we have presentation to update council on organizational changes in the City of Globe Public Works Department. Paul?
Mr. Mayor and Members of Council, if you pull out the, just in preparation for the presentation, you pull out the big 11 by 17 org chart there. Tonight, I want to share with you, with council, our new Public Works organizational structure, okay? This became on the front burner when we realized that strategic planning session earlier this year, that, you know, we had all these projects in infrastructure, and it's like, well, Public Works needs to do this, and Public Works needs to do that, and there's a lot of burden on there. We felt that, you know, while we're asking them to do so much, I think we, to a point, we need to give them the tools and the structure that make sure that they can achieve what council wants. There's some change-ups in staffing that allows some opportunities to do this, and We are, John Angulo is now Deputy Public Works Director, okay? He will be in charge of all operational crews out in the field. This is a streamlining and putting under one leader, one sense of guidance, all the field crews. So that will, and you have the.
Cheerlead? Can we jump up and down? Because that is so well deserved. I'm sorry. Kathy, quiet!
So if you can see that the green will be the people, the, under Jerry Barnes, under the management and doing the design planning, working with CAG, working with ADOT. The field, which is going to be the cutter wells, wastewater treatment plant, water, the water dogs. the water dogs fleet, and general public works, which is streets. And you also have facilities and the cemetery. And so anybody who gets in a pickup truck and heads out in the morning is going to be supervised and under the direction of John. So you have that one key person that knows exactly where people are, what they're working on, and where they need to be, how many people need to be there, and what's the priorities. If you, I had the joy of sitting through a two-hour meeting with John and Jerry this week, and the phone kept ringing for John, and he's giving direction and making sure people are at the right place, right time, and making things happen. So that's really important. With John shifting up to Deputy Public Works Director, we need to backfill his position as streets facility superintendent, and that will, that position will now be held by Richard Thomas. You know, not a lot of drama there. He just gets stuff done. And so that's really good. With, so as streets superintendent, that leaves that position open for Richard's position, then that will go to Uriel Perez. And Uriel, you're here somewhere. There he is. Okay. And, and so, so I just want to let you know, we're going to pass out Richard's cell phone number. Every time you think to call John, okay, skip John, go to Richard. Okay? Richard will be that go-to person when you need barricades, or there's a leak, or you want somebody to drive by and figure out what's going on with trash, or whatever. That'll be Richard doing that, and then Uriel will be down helping guide more than just streets, but with cemetery and facilities and taking care of that. That will leave open a vacant position as a lead in the roads and transportation, but we'll work those through. So the only other key change, well, it's not the only other key change, it's definitely a key change. In the restructuring, you'll see that with, we have cutter, we have the wastewater treatment plant, we have the water and the water dogs. Dave Kemp will now be Water Field Manager. So Dave, you got it? So anything going on with the water dogs and the water delivery system, and I don't know, I'm butchering the lingo here, they have a whole set of lingo that I, I don't usually do correctly, but he will be the one calling the shots, where to dig, you know, how to fix that valve, what parts, just managing all of those ongoing repairs, some emergencies, some maintenance, but he'll be calling the shots. Underneath him will be Edol Fortes. He will be the lead water worker. And then between that, they'll split the duties of trying to, sometimes they have two crews, sometimes they all work together. But those are the, some of the key shifts. And the, the other things you'll see that's really important on here, if you go up on the far right, second one down, under engineering, we have a blue stake right-of-way easement position that we're putting together. In the strategic action plan, there is a lot of need for getting easements straightened out, figuring out the right-of-ways. We see that with Maple and Six, we see that all over, a lot of the stuff that we have to do, and with the blue staking, figuring out where the lines are. And so working under Vince on the engineering side, we'll have this person kind of fulfilling council goals and trying to identify. I mean, we have a lot of work we can do in this strategic plan and in our infrastructure. The first piece of that puzzle is taking inventory of that and documenting and starting those changes. Part of the professionalism, part of the productivity, we're looking to move into some technology. We have, every time that a crew goes out and works on a project, we have, we're working on a formal work order system where you have, you go in and other than emergencies, you have priorities and you get assigned, John will send them out, and they'll do that job and figure out how many people are working on how many things. So we can tell. So next time we have a strategic planning session, we don't have to say, well, you know, they're working on this, they're working on that, how much time they spend on this project. We'll be able to document that. And we're looking at some programs, we haven't the budget. And so that professionalism, accountability, tracking, you know, across citywide, our documentation policies and procedures and enforcement need to be strengthened, same in public works. And so, so we're looking at some technology. And it's, you know, having public works departments embrace technology is something you need to do carefully, you need to make sure it's useful, and they can do that. But I think, I think everybody's positive on the challenge and will help with that. So we have that position that will be, will be posting. And then the, across there, you can see a lot of the inmates that, the Department of Correction people that we have working that we couldn't get the things done without. Let me check my notes, make sure I haven't missed anything. The, the last piece of the puzzle, and this is not a public works issue, but this is a city issue, this is the current economic climate. We need to be more competitive in hiring. We are, we are a government agency, we have good insurance, we have good retirement, but we also need to have, make sure that we have a livable wage. And it costs us money when we're turning through people and the training and the retraining and people leaving and getting cherry picked away from us. So basically, from this point forward, the new starting wage for City Globe will be 12.15 an hour. If you make it past the year probation, you'll go to $13 an hour. And that'll be across the board for any new hires. Now, the people who are currently employed under that salary, we're going to make those adjustments to get them up to that same standard. We, I think we have half of the people in public works right now are in that first year probationary, almost half. But, but we're going to make those adjustments. All of these adjustments for the changes in position are within the budgetary capacity that the council's already approved. And so we'll make those changes across the board. It'll also apply to the people who are under the $13 range in library, in the museum, in active adult. Okay? And so we'll, we'll make those adjustments also there. Then you have a problem of compression. Okay? Because when you bring people from the, the very new people from the bottom up, you end up with some people who get overlapped. And so there'll be some, we're still looking at that and how to get that fit in. So there will be some adjustments to spread out that bottom level to get the compression out of there and make sure that, that people who were here for two, three years are registered and rewarded for that experience they've had and that dedication they've had. And so we don't want to, we don't want to overlap on that. And so, so we'll make that all work. With announcing this, I wanted to share this with council, and if you had any questions, starting tomorrow, we'll go through and talk with everybody, make all the changes, come to agreements. And then when that is completed, we will send out the changes to council, including the impact on the budget. And so, did council have any questions about this or for me? And if, at some point, when you, if you have questions for me, if you have questions for Jerry, I'm going to bring Jerry up for comments and also John.
Early?
I just have a comment. Thank you, thank you, and thank you again for listening. Thank you, thank you for doing this for our employees. We have very good employees.
We do have very good employees.
We have very good employees.
We do need to keep them.
We need to recognize them and appreciate them. And it's not always money, I get it, but who doesn't want a little extra coin?
Well, I mean-
And they deserve it, and they deserve it, and thank you.
I mean, I could go on for an hour for the reasons this is good and the dedication. We need to reward those people, we need to keep them on our team, we need to make sure they feel as part of the team. And the single, the single point with John being that person that they'll respond to, they're evaluated by, they have to answer to, and that they're shifted around, I think the productivity and just the human factors of having a tight-knit group is going to make this team-
We can't wait for that.
Yeah. No, we, we have, we have good, we can get to that great, and they can do better, and they're excited about it.
So now we need burrow day for everybody. Everybody.
Everybody in the city.
The whole city.
In the whole city, burrow day.
One group, we got the whole city.
I, yeah.
Do, and we need to have it all, everybody to get-
I just, I'm, I'm afraid of horses, I'm okay with burrows.
Burrow for everybody, yay!
So any other questions before I bring-
Thank you. I just, a comment as well. I want to congratulate John, Richard, David, and Uriel for your positions. I think this is very instrumental in your department, in the city's entire public works department. I think you'll find that all of you working together with John and Jerry as a team, the documentation process that you're putting together is just going to help you better justify your budget requests down the road because you have actual documentation that you can take to your supervisor and say, we need this because of this, we need this, here's the data, here's the proof. So I'm really excited to hear that you've, Jerry, I know you've got a big part of this, and I'm probably telling you something you already know, but I think this, this effort to create this, this team umbrella of responders and first responders and department heads and sub-heads, I think it's going to make your department just more efficient. You guys are longtime employees, you know what you're doing, and we rely on you to teach those people that are coming up through the ranks, coming up as new hires, to show them how things are done and how processes are done. Because it's those little things that we may not do accurately that ultimately end up costing, sometimes in safety and sometimes, and a lot of times financially. So I want to say thank you as well. John, congratulations and good luck to you. I think, I think you're all on the right track. So Jerry, especially you, you know, you're the head of all this, and it's all on you. So-
Thanks. Let's hope it works.
Yeah, let's just hope it works. No, no, but in sincerity, in all sincerity, it's, I really like what you've put together here.
Any other comments from council?
I just want to say thank you for listening. I know I beat this kind of like a dead horse, but-
No, 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 no. You know, I, you know, I'm not the fastest person in the world, but I do listen.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I just wanted to kind of fill in some of the background a little bit. When we talked about reorganization, we talked about a number of different ways, that's what took so long. And it took us a while to realize what we had was working, you know, and so we needed to restructure. And we didn't need to bring in new people to do things. What we, what we had is a lot of inexperienced people being supervised by highly qualified people, and we needed to keep that structure out there. So that's why we've restructured this, to bring our qualified people up in a supervisory position and so they can mentor the, like Paul said, 19 out of 37 of our people are on probation. So, and that's not all new hires, that's some promotionary probations and so forth, but, but basically, that's what it is. But as an example, it was the railroad dilemma that we had where Uriel and Richard and John took crews out, and what they told us was going to take a week, we knocked out in, what, six hours, guys? Something like that? And so we have a team that can do anything out there. We, we have a water break, we don't divide between utilities and streets and so forth. Anybody who's available goes on it. So that's, that's what makes us successful. That's what this organizational chart reflects. We, we wanted to make sure that people like Vincent were in a position where he would be more flexible than just key hold in one area. We wanted to make sure that Dave Kemp's expertise as a master plumber was out there and was, and he's able to mentor the people who are under him. And he is a very good organizational person to put out in the field and make sure things get done. The other things that Paul and I have discussed and John have is buy-in. We want our supervisors to buy in. So we're involving them in the decisions of the department, we're involving them in the meetings and we're talking about work orders and so forth. And David attended the meeting the other day, as did Richard and John, and we want their input because they're what makes this city successful. You know, if you were here when I did the budget, where, presentation, I think it was 100 and some slides, that, where I told you what Public Works did, that was not an exaggeration. We do a lot, and we have 37 people. And the only reason we can do this is the supervisors and the way they supervise. It's great. I think that the money the council appropriated needs to come from the bottom up, and I think that's great, we'll be able to retain more people that way. But it was also great to have within the budget structure, already budget structure, the ability to move other people up in the supervisory roles without impacting the budget. And, and that way, that $30,000, I think that was appropriate, it can be used from the bottom up. So, nice job. Nice job. So it took some convincing to me, but yeah, nice job.
Many lunches about who we're listening to.
Yeah, there was many napkin drawings. But anyway, this is, this is where we can use our talent the best. Okay? I'm not saying that a year from now, I won't be moving this guy here and, you know, because it depends on who you have working for you. But these guys are really good at what they do. I mean, there is not a single one of them that if I was back in the private sector, I couldn't make money with. So, so I'm, and when you go from, from that angle, you realize you have the right team. So, John, did you want to come up and say something?
I have a question.
Yeah, sure.
I want to know if Chris got some shoes.
Chris ordered some shoes.
Goodness.
What'd he say?
And he's out there working his mind and off with duct tape around his shoes, and I'm like, we got to get this dude some shoes.
He had a special order of shoes, he had like 20s.
Yeah, he's like a size 19 foot or something.
Oh. 18s.
Was Eric, you did?
Yeah. Yeah, they're big. But, but if I get in trouble, I'm bringing him with me.
Yeah.
Mayor and council, first of all, I just wanted to thank you all for the continued support that we receive in public works on a regular basis, so that, you know, budget-wise and throughout every, every council meeting that's echoed. But also, I want to thank Paul and Jerry for the vote of confidence to take on this type of project. You know, I'm confident, it's like I said, to me, it's, failure is not an option. And I just want to make note of that, you know, it's often asked of me if, when we have water breaks or any issues out in the field, that, you know, if we need any more help, or who do we need out there? I often say, we already have the best team out there. I said, so it's just a matter of getting things put together for their, you know, their needs. And these are some of the gentlemen out here. You know, I was thanked tonight on the public, on the parks and the recs. Well, we've got Ed Johnson and his wife actually came up. He worked all day, he drove back to Superior and turned around and came right back for the meeting. That's the kind of dedication we have.
Thank you, Ed.
You know. And lastly, you know, just like Jerry mentioned, is the buy-in. You know, we've got Terry Harmon that showed up for this meeting, he's been working out all day too. And, you know, he just started with us a month ago, if you remember, we did the introduction. So he's one of our new employees, but he's already starting to buy into what we're, you know, what we're doing. So I'm confident that, as I said, it's going to, it's a positive move for all of us. And once again, thank you for the support.
I'd like to make a comment. Thank you, Jerry, Paul, and John for the structure. You know, we always see those structures in police and fire, and you get your line of flow, what you're working with. I think the right choices are made, and John, you're the right person for that position. I want to commend also Uriel, David, Richard, for stepping up in the supervision, taking on additional responsibilities. That's important for the future of our city. Vince is another one, Vince is another part of our future. But not only stepping up, we need to, as a city, offer them also the support and the education to become good leaders. And, you know, not only within the organization or the department, but there's additional outside courses and stuff that'll help us be good leaders in the future. And also the ones that are on the lower end align a succession plan to get them to be leaders for the future too. We need to support those individuals also. But thank you, and I'm happy with this, with this chart and seeing where these individuals will be supervised by.
So just a couple more things, if I may. One, I did want to mention Ed because Ed's one of our new supervisors. He runs the Parks Department, and he, he is a very good example of why we want to do this this way. Because he has taken a leadership role, he's done a very good job of it, and he was mentored into that position. And one of the reasons we did this the way we did, because we wanted our leaders to mentor- we did this the way we did, because we wanted our leaders to mentor more and run equipment less, you know, and get in the hole less. You know, we seem to duplicate a lot of things. And we... This structure takes that away. And it makes it very clear who's responsible for what. And, you know, and there are days when Richard is not here, so Uriel will step up. There's days when I'm not here, so John will step up. So and we need that fluidity to go between positions like that. Because as every one of you have said, we wear multiple hats. So the other thing I wanted to tell you is, as soon as we, just about as soon as we got this organizational chart together, we have a void. Because we have a vacancy that's going to be created in the wastewater treatment plant. So Mr. Baroldi is retiring on us. So, you know, I questioned putting retired next to that, but he smiled every time I tried. So I just kind of aggravated me, so I didn't do it. But he's talking about leaving us the first week in December and going on to the next chapter in his life. So, you know, I might have recognized that story because I've done that myself a couple of times. But we wish him well, but that's going to leave a big hole there. So we're going to have to figure out how we're going to fill that. And that next new person might have an impact on this org chart. So, you know, we hope that we can get somebody, you know, half as good as Frank in there and mentor him to be like Frank is. And so, you know, I wanted to mention that, you know, as soon as you get one of these done, something happens.
Thanks, Frank.
So and Pete Gordilla has already returned his retirement papers. I think he has one day left, doesn't he, John?
Wow.
I think he has coming back for one day to get his free lunch.
After 30, how many years?
I don't know.
Long, long time.
So he's well deserving too. And we show his position as a vacancy under the Parks Department.
And we'll have them both back.
Yeah, we'll have them both back to council and, you know, and give them more hell then. So, you know, we hate losing people, but if you have to, please let them retire. Because that means they've given to the city everything they've got. And these people who are in the audience here are those kind of people. So, you know, they are here because they care about the city. So anything else, John, you want to?
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, I want one quick note I wanted to share with you that I should have done sooner, but Councilman Giles, did you have a comment or?
I do.
Yes.
We do have those kind of people because just a few days ago, I had no water yet again. And I trotted down the hill and said, "Oh, my goodness." And I go out there to the Apache Underground guys and already Dave was already there. By the time I got really and truly, I walked down the hill and the water department was already there. And by the time I got back, and Dave said, "It'll take 45 minutes or so," it didn't even take 10. By the time I got back up the hill, there was water again. So yes, we do have those kind of people.
We do. And no, we're very proud of all the workers and the changes. This is something we couldn't afford not to do. And I think with the productivity, with the camaraderie and getting this going, turnover kills us. And if you see the young guys walking around that you don't know their names yet, and they come in in packs and they're, you know, lifting stuff and doing stuff, and it's a big turnover down there. And each one of those, John, I know John sees those a little bit of himself in there, that they too could be a long-term employee for the City of Globe if we do it right. And I think that's what we're doing. And that's what we want, is committed people, which I think we're finding we have and are getting more of. A side note, you'll notice EUSI Operator Record up in the upper-left corner. We have a standing position for someone who is qualified to fill that slot that has the certs in the three areas and the expertise to help with the long-range planning and the problem solving. We have had it up for almost two, three months, I think two months at least, advertising it nationally. If you look at the League of Cities for Arizona Positions, Utility and Public Works, there are a ton of positions just like the one that we're looking for, that other cities in the Valley are advertising for. This is a tough slot to fill. We, you know that when we do the EUSI contract, that they're the operator record for both the water and the sewer side. But they bring that expertise. We'd love to bring somebody up to match that and equal that, but they are a partner in there. If we could find someone who, you know, who had those qualifications could give that service, you know, Paul Hendricks and Chris Hendricks know that that would be optimal. But that, we don't see a lot of, you know, it's going to be a long haul to try to find somebody that A is qualified, B would want to work in Globe and see that we could afford. But right now, our partnership with EUSI is really important in maintaining this because they are our experts. They're the ones that help us with ADQ and with the situations we have and just some of that high-tech stuff that doesn't happen every day. But when you have a question, you need to have somebody that's capable to do that. And so they are a key part of the puzzle. And Chris is here, I'm sorry, Paul is here and Chris Hendricks also is key to that. So I just wanted to share with that that they are a part of that team. So Mr. Mayor, members of council, any other final comments?
And I want to commend EUSI for the service they offer our city. I mean, that expertise and knowledge that we can't do without. And with Frank now retiring and everything, help us in that transition, in that position also.
Yeah, they're right beside us. And, you know, we need that, you know, that input. It's something that they provide and they provide at a very affordable rate, considering the situation.
Mr. Mayor?
Freddie?
Is there any way that we can get a picture with all the new staff?
You bet. Well, I think we just got every Public Works person in the room down here.
Yay, come on down.
So anybody who's in Public Works, you know who you are. And that'd be you guys.
Maybe we can get, put it in the article in the paper.
And we want to just let you know that we truly support Public Works, not only Public Works, but all our departments, police, fire, library, BASH, everybody. We truly support you guys.
Jerry's sitting in the chair back there.
So trying to clean the room house.
Hey, guys, congratulations.
Item four, we'll go to consent calendar. Matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. Public hearing items are designated with an asterisk. Prior to consideration of the consent agenda, the mayor will ask whether any member of the public wishes to remove a public hearing item for separate consideration. Members of the council and/or staff may remove any item for separate consideration. A. Consideration of waiver, section 2-4-10A, prior discussion rule to allow action on the balance of the consent agenda. Accounts payable: $689,594.53. Consideration of approval, council minutes. A. July 16, 2019, council meeting minutes. C. August 12, 2019, library committee meeting minutes. B. Consideration of agreements and purchases of less than $25,000. C. Discussion and consideration of new building permits. D. Discussion and possible improvement of amendment number one to contract number PS-2018-0040 with D2 surveying to extend their contract term from one additional year in the amount not to exceed $30,000 for on-call survey services. Item E. Discussion and possible approval amendment number one to contract number PS-2018-0038 with Ajax Mount Enterprises to extend their contract term for one additional year in the amount not to exceed $30,000 for on-call survey services. Item F. Discussion and possible approval of amendment number one to contract number PS-2018-0039 with Sunrise Engineering Incorporated to extend their contract item for one additional year in the amount not to exceed $30,000 for on-call services. And G. Consideration to appoint Larry Brown to the Arts Advisory Commission. Anybody in the audience, the staff, or the council wishing to remove any of these items?
Mr. Mayor?
Freddie?
I'd like to pull item one, accounts payable, just for discussion.
If there are no other, I move that we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Minor item one.
Yes.
Second.
Can we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? And before I call for the vote, I know we didn't pull them, but can we just say that these are, these surveyors, the survey contracts are individual? I mean, it's not 90,000, it's just 30,000 total.
And it's 3,000 combined, we just, they're all split between. Possibly 30,000 to one or 10 to each.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed. So we'll go back to item one, accounts payable. Freddie?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to... Shelley, I, if you could check my electronic version, but I haven't, I don't see my accounts payable in my electronic version. I don't know if anybody else got them.
I don't have a printed version.
It didn't come out, Shelley. Wasn't in any of the packets.
And I, I'm texting Jeannie. She's watching at home.
No, it was submitted.
But?
This may be my error.
I may have missed it, but I'm just not finding it.
Okay, so, so we can, if it's councils, with council support, we can bring those back in two weeks. Or I think that would be the best thing to do. Have you, did we vote on consent yet? Okay, so on this one, let's table, let's table this.
We haven't tabled.
Yeah, but we pulled this off. So let's take a vote to table this and we'll return it in two weeks and then vote on it again. Okay.
That said, Mr. Mayor, I motion that we table item one, accounts payable, till we have a chance to review it and then move on at our next meeting.
Second.
We have motion and second. Any further discussion?
Will that include this?
Yeah, we'll, that'll carry forward as part of that. That's an addendum to it.
Other discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor signify.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Freddie.
We have new business. Item A. Discussion and consideration to issue invitation for bid IFB number CS-2019-0053 for BASH Pagala Museum Roof Replacement Project with funds to come from account number 21-65-51236. Capital Outlay Museum Building Maintenance. Jerry?
Lianna.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, Jeannie took the night off. She was a little under the weather. She worked today, but she was watching from home and texting me.
That's who I was on, I was on the phone with. Okay, so... Basically, this is for the roof on the museum building. It's not in the ruins. It's the main museum building. We've done multiple repairs, repairs on that since I've been here. The last time, we had leak each bad enough where we, where some of our displays were in danger. The council put this on the CIP for this year. And we finally got the scope to the point where we're ready to go out to, for an IFB to bid on it. So that's what we're asking tonight, is permission and a motion to put this out to bid.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion and second. Any further discussion? Now, this is to move it forward. There's no point or...
We will bring it back to you as soon as the bid is awarded.
Okay, so it'll come back as a bid.
And the contract. All we're asking is direction right now.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed. Thank you, Jerry. Item B. Discussion and direction to staff to advertise requests for statements of qualifications for on-call electrical contracting support services to be initially funded by account number 51-80-51234, wastewater contractual services.
Now, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have a need, a need for electrician on a regular basis. In fact, Frank hired one tonight. Right. To go out and fix the RAS pumps because the electrical went out. We called multiple electricians as per our procurement code, but, and we couldn't get ahold of anybody but one, but we had emergencies, so we sent somebody out. And it was a minor amount. But that happens quite a bit. So we want multiple, or at least one, and possibly multiple contracts with electricians to be able to pick up the phone and call them out when they're available. And if they're not available, we call the next one. And that happens to us a lot. We also would use these contracts to fulfill some of the electrical portion of our contracts. For instance, rehab of the wastewater plant and so forth, that would save us money in the long run. So we wouldn't get the long drawn-out bids and the percentages of the add-ons and so forth. It would just be an hourly rate. So that's how we want to use this. And we would propose now that council give us direction to go out for an RSOQ, a request for qualifications, a statement of qualifications, to be able to interview and hire these people.
Questions from council?
Mr. Barnes, are you looking for just individual contractors? Or are you looking for, you know, when I talk individual contractors, I'm looking like Spurgeon's Electric is an individual contractor, but they're pretty big.
Yeah, we're looking at, we're looking at multiple areas. We're looking local, but we're also looking for somebody that can do the bigger jobs as well. So that's kind of what we did with the surveying. There's a couple of local surveyors, and then there's one that's really big.
Okay. So it's open to both?
Yeah, yeah. So we like the idea. And it depends on the submittals too. You know, if, a lot of small contractors are able to do big jobs if they want to do them. So it depends on their submittal for the position, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
If there are no other comments or questions, I motion that we direct staff to advertise for requests for statement of qualifications for an on-call electrical contracting support service to be initially funded out of account 51-80-51234, wastewater contractual services.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry.
Item C. Consideration to approve the Globe Police Department as recipient for the 2019 San Carlos Apache Tribal Gaming Enterprise 12D grant funding in the amount of $13,309.19 and request to waive section 2-4-10 prior discussion rule. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. This grant come upon us pretty quick. We were unaware of it. And so we put together a package. As you know, the police department's been working to get donated vehicles out of the City of Chandler. Once those vehicles get here, we did not have a methodology of equipping them with proper radios. And so we took advantage of the grant and submitted for four radios. We were awarded enough money for three. So this just came through. Myself and Commander Castaneda will be attending a dinner in a week or so to accept the check on behalf of the Globe Police Department and the City of Globe. So it turned out to be a great opportunity for us. And we really benefited greatly by the generosity of the tribal community.
Yes, we'd like to thank them very much.
Yeah, congratulations on working on it.
And you can go back for 12D funds every year.
They will really get to know me, sir.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, the Fire Department did do a joint application for 12D with Tri-City, but were unsuccessful. But they're going to, they're going to try... for 12D with Tri-City, but were unsuccessful, but they're gonna, they're gonna try, try again next year, so.
And we can also try another, also reservations, too, other 12D grants and other ones, too, not just this local one.
Right, and I, and I know that, that's a, they're, they're all very competitive, and I think historically, we have received Tawhona Odom and Grick grant money.
Mr. Mayor? I'll make a motion that we approve the acceptance of the 12D funding for radios for the police department.
And you want to waive the rules to vote on?
I guess, yeah.
Yeah, we have to.
Okay, waive the rules.
We want to make sure it's accepted before he goes and thanks him.
Okay, we have motion to accept 12D grant and waive the rules for action. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed. Thank you, Chief.
Congratulations, Chief.
Item D, discussion and consideration on planning and zoning recommendation to change C2 and C3 zoning to allow some agricultural use with conditional use permit. Chris?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Last Wednesday night, we held a planning and zoning meeting, along with a public hearing for, looking for recommendations from the, from the commission to, to the council on possible changes to the zoning code. These changes were, the proposal was to bring in, allow some agritourism events, or parts of, to the commercial zone properties in Globe. This is in an effort to increase business and expand businesses in Globe, but this agritourism is basically set up for larger parcels, and this minimum of one acre. It allows for some actual growing stuff, and it allows for some animals, based on, number of animals based on the size of the property. P&amp;Z liked the idea, and unanimously voted to recommend to council to, to change the zoning code. Is there any questions on these recommendations?
Questions? Mr. Mayor, if I may. Chris, how many animals are we talking in this petting zoo?
Actually, in the next item, when we talked about the...
That's where we're going to talk about that?
Yeah, it gives the, in your packet, it has like the breakdown of per acre.
Yeah, I know one horse, and I know we're not talking horses, we're talking small farm animals, I believe.
Yeah, we're, we're talking, you know, if you have two acres, you could have like three or four horses, and, or you could have a horse and a cow, and, you know, any combination of these things.
It's two heads per acre.
Chris, this is mainly commercial property that's allowed on this?
We're looking at C2 and C3 zoning, that's, that's all of our commercial zoning in the city.
And it doesn't matter proximity to residence or anything?
Well, this would be, all of this would happen with a conditional use permit, and of course, there's, within the next item that has the code changes, it, it spells out 100 feet away from any house, and if there is a problem with smells and that they can't alleviate, then their conditional use permit would be withdrawn, and they wouldn't be allowed to do, to do that. But it's all to protect the neighboring properties, as well as allow the, the property owner to expand their businesses.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the, what we, what we've learned is that the smell is the, is a factor that's so important. You know, distance and the amount of animals can vary, but you can have one animal that's not really close that still puts off a lot of smell if it's not controlled right. And so, so the important thing is to make sure that whoever it is keeps track of the smell.
Do we have motion? Oh, you got a question?
Maybe a comment, but maybe on the next item, about the smell and the 100 feet and all that, but mainly, I just want to say, on the conditional use permit, I think that's an excellent idea, because that's really the city's leverage, so that whenever whoever this proprietor violates the code, then we can pull the permit, and that part of the business cannot be taken anymore, so, or delivered, maybe. But I think the conditional use permit was, was a wise choice to, to offer this to our business owners that, that want to have these kinds of petting zoos and things like that, so, just a comment. Thank you.
Do we have motion to move this item forward?
Motion and approve and move forward to the next available meeting.
Second.
We have motion and a second to move this item forward to the next council meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify. Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed. Item B, discussion and consideration of ordinance 859 amending city zoning code sections 14-5-11, C2 zoning, and 14-5-12, C3 zoning allowing commercially zoned properties under a conditional use permit, the ability to use their properties for limited agricultural use. And Shelley, do you want to read ordinance number 859, please?
Mr. Mayor, ordinance number 859, and ordinance of the City of Globe, Arizona, amending the Globe City Zoning Code by amending city zoning code sections 14-5-11 and 14-5-12 to include agricultural uses, the use of the properties for some agricultural uses with a conditional use permit, and repealing any and all other ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict therewith. Is council pleased with the reading?
Yes.
Well, again, good evening, Mayor and council, this, this is actually the ordinance that changes the code that we've been talking about, so if there's additional questions...
Yep, Shelley?
So in our regular zoning code, it states no roosters, hens only, and, and I, and not that I have some problem with roosters, but I have over acre of land when you add up all my parcels, but my neighbor's house is situated such that if I had roosters, they would annoy the heck out of her and the whole neighborhood. So I, I don't think we should allow roosters in, it says in here, number two, no roosters shall be cooped, stabled, or combined in any building within 100 feet. But if our code already says we, we don't allow roosters, we only allow hens, we should not have roosters in there, because that might be a loophole for somebody to have roosters, and they, they are very noisy.
Then they, they would be in a violation of the, of the conditional use permit if they're, if they have, I read, I read that as no roosters, but I guess it could be read...
Yeah, I know, I read it a couple times, because what it says is no roosters, rodents, or livestock shall be cooped or stabled. So to me, that's saying you're, we're allowing roosters and rodents and livestock, if they are not within, if they were, if they exceed 100 feet. So I think we got to clarify that, because we don't want rodents or roosters.
Well, any conditional use permit would have a noise section to it, and if a rooster is violating the conditional use permit, and the home, the business owners do not want to lose their conditional use permit, I'm sure they would get rid of the rooster.
But doesn't it contradict our, our zoning code that is, says now there's no roosters? What do you guys?
Well, my thought is, we're, we're talking about the, the C, what was it, C, the zones?
The C2 and C3 zones.
The C2s, commercials, that, that doesn't apply to residential, that, that applies to just the commercial.
Yeah, but we're commercial and residential meet, which is the case where this person is.
You're exactly right. So if, if there's any...
Houses within, very close to this.
If there's, if there's any noise, that's an issue, or there's any smell that's an issue, if flies are an issue, then they would have to fix the problem or lose their CUP.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Chris, did, did, we do have the option that they could stipulate on passage to strike, strike roosters, and from there, if, if that's a concern, we can modify it in the, in the passage.
I think it's how you read it also, I mean, it does say that it'll allow it within 100 feet, so I guess, if we're not allowing roosters in residential, we probably should not consider allowing them in, near in this commercial.
Or rodents, we don't want rodents either, so how about if we just do livestock?
So if...
Hamsters.
We bring this back, we could, and...
Who decides if a rabbit is a rodent or not? I have some rabbits!
So...
If you choose to bring this back for the next meeting, and you would wish to strike any mention of roosters out of it, you can see that in the, in your motion, and we could adjust the, the language of the, of the ordinance to disallow roosters.
Okay, then I would like to make a motion to move this forward, with, with the exception of under section B, paragraph two, let us just have the sentence say, "No livestock shall be cooped, stabled, or combined in any building within 100 feet from any residence."
Okay.
Is that agreeable?
Do we got a second on that motion?
A second.
Okay, we're eliminating roosters and rodents, and just leaving livestock.
Members of council, do, do we have a definition of what qualifies as a rodent? I mean, I think we usually have a negative definition of a rodent.
You ought to get a definition of what livestock is.
Well, we have a, we passed the thing allowing rabbits, so the rabbits are already allowed.
What rodents, what rodents are you afraid of?
I don't think a rabbit's a rodent, I think a rat is.
But, but guinea pigs?
Guinea pigs are a rodent.
Guinea pigs, hamsters.
I think technically a rodent would be a rodent.
I mean, why don't we eliminate just the rooster part of it, and then research the rodent? Yeah.
Rodent sounds terrible in our...
I know, but we don't judge people by their names.
Okey dokey. I will go along with striking rooster. My, I will modify my motion to state that we will strike rooster from the sentence.
I'll Google if, if rabbits are rodents.
Okay.
So we have motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor signify. Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item F, council will discuss and possibly approve a letter to the U.S. Forestry Service expressing council comments in reference to the draft environmental impact statement for the proposed resolution copper project located in eastern Penale County. Paul?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we were approached by Brian Sepola to comment on the, the draft environmental impact statement, and so we, I put some information into your packet, but before we go any further, we have resolution, Vicky Piercy, who is with, with resolution, and she is going to do a quick presentation, no, no PowerPoint, but just she presented to Hilo County, and I know, Mayor, you saw that presentation and asked that we, we share that presentation here, so we're looking five to 10 minutes, and, and then we can go back to the discussion. So, Vicky?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members.
Vicky, how are you?
Nice to see you. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and thank you for your time. The Forest Service in Aug, on August 9th of this year released a draft environmental impact statement disclosing a years of independent analysis by the United States Forest Service about a dozen federal, state, county agencies, at least 12 tribes, and lots of input from local stakeholders to shape the project. So this document discloses the environmental and social impacts of the proposed resolution copper mine and land exchange. The document is thorough, it is comprehensive, and this process really started in 2013 when we originally submitted our mine plan of operations, so it's been quite a long time and quite a lot of study. There was a very lengthy 120-day public scoping period a number of years ago in early 2016, where the original proposal, the mine proposal, and the land exchange was put out for public comment. I'd say arguably, the largest component of public comment was consumed by the tailings. The proposed location of tailings originally was on Tonto National Forest, located in quite close proximity to the town of Superior and Queen Valley. It's an area that is heavily recreated by lots of visitors from people in Penale County, as well as the Phoenix and East Valley. So not only was the location an issue, but the type of technology was an issue as well. Between the time we submitted our mine plan of operations and where we are at today, there have been three very catastrophic tailings failures, related to a certain type of tailings called an upstream dam, which just doesn't have, it's a, it's a tailings impoundment that's used all over the state of Arizona. It's very routine to use in the mining industry, but it has been the type of dam that's been implicated in these types of catastrophic failures, which have killed hundreds of people. Of course, in other locations that are much wetter and have higher seismic risk than we do here. So the Forest Service independently took in those comments, and came up with, over three years, they looked at 30 different tailings alternatives in a 200-mile radius, and came up with four different tailings locations with five different technologies. And the alternative that has been proposed and selected in the draft environmental impact statement is quite drastically different than the one that we had proposed, but it is shaped based on people's feedback and comments. So the location is now behind the Ray Mine Open Pit, largely on state trust land. It is far away from communities in the Copper Triangle, the next closest community is about 20 miles away, rather than Town of Superior and Queen Valley being about three miles away. It's more out of sight, out of mind, and really best addresses the range of issues that the public had raised. Of course, no, no location or alternative is absolutely perfect, because all of them have issues, but on balance, this one seems to address the majority of concerns. The other thing that the tailings location is, is something that is a technology that's unlike anything that's in the state of Arizona, it's unlike anything that is in the United States. It is a robust, resilient downstream dam and full centerline dam that have robust, resilient structural zones, or really water dams that are built to contain water, but they're containing tailings. And those two dams are contained in one impoundment. And one of the, I'd say the deal breakers associated with tailings is, not only did people not want to see it, and they don't want it in their backyard, and they don't want it in places where they recreate, but they didn't want to live with an eyesore forever. So reclaiming as we go was really important, so that's been incorporated into the draft DIS as well. So we're still kind of coming on board with it, but the Forest Service did quite a lot of engagement before the draft went out to gauge sentiment on, on this, and it was quite positive. So that's probably the, one of the biggest elements of the draft DIS. The other headlines that are important as well are the socioeconomics, which essentially are 1,500 direct jobs, 2,200 indirect jobs, and if you consider wages and compensation and benefits and taxes, it's a billion dollars annually to the state of, of Arizona's economy on an annual basis for the better part of 60 years. So it's quite a lot of, of economic benefit. The valuation of the Superior Unified School District would be about 30 million annually, so every resident in the Town of Superior would see a fairly drastic decrease in their tax bill. Penale County, you know, between the Penale County Junior College and the taxes, about 40 to 50 million annually. So there's a lot of, of economic benefit that would, that would go back to the state. I will say that one thing that's been really important, we're a big mine, and we do have a big impact, but the way that we have designed our mitigations and what kind of mitigations we do is really important. And so the Town of Superior has been a really excellent partner in communicating what's important to them, so we could start working on these mitigations with them early. Recreation's a big deal, so the council has really defined their vision and their plan for the town. They don't want it to just be a mining company anymore. They want it to be a vibrant town with a mine, but they really wanted some diversified elements of their economy. So recognizing that at the mine itself, we would impact about seven acres of public road. We work with the town, as well as other NGOs, to come up with a diversified recreational plan, so we have a multi-use trail system for hikers, bikers, equestrian, single track, and some other motorized of 70 miles to... of 70 miles to offset the seven miles of, of impact. It also connects to the Arizona Trail, the Legends of Superior Trail, and it's sort of designed to help bring in, Superior would like to see daytime tourism, come in, spend your money, recreate and then go home. So some other things that we've done as well is we do have to have, the Oak Flat Campground has to remain open for as long as it is safe. It will not be impacted for many, many decades, so we have a plan to do that. But also we've got an offset campground. The town of Superior and residents had chosen a parcel called Castleberry. It's located at the base of Picopost Mountain, very close to Boyce Thompson Arboretum, and they want that to be a replacement campground, so that's in as a mitigation as well. Bouldering will be impacted, so we have a bouldering location that's midway between Kearney and Superior. It's an excellent bouldering location, it just has no access, so we would provide access to that. And then we also have other traditional and sport climbing that aren't going to be impacted at all. We will maintain access to those to the public on our, on our private property, but also make sure that there's other access areas that need to be developed to keep those climbing areas open. Water's also a big deal. The mine will have impacts to groundwater and to surface water. I think arguably the biggest issue is that, you know, you have open pit mines in this location and so stormwater that would otherwise flow to receiving creeks get consumed by open pits. And same thing with the subsidence, it will be slow and progressive over many decades, but water that would otherwise, stormwater that would otherwise go to Queen Creek will eventually be consumed by the subsidence area. And so we need, we know how much that loss is as you kind of work your way down Queen Creek. It's 18% of stormwater flows at Magma Avenue, which crosses Queen Creek. And so the town's made it explicitly clear that you gotta put that back and we agree, right? So we want to make sure that the town feels whole. There's other issues related to Queen Creek, so we've got a, in the EIS, we have the entirety of Queen Creek, which includes resolution private property at the headwaters and our partner BHP property that goes through town. We put a conservation easement over it. We do invasive species management because there are some invasive species in there and then we would replace the water that would eventually be lost to make it a riparian habitat. And that's something that is of great value to the community, to the town. It gives them a sense of place and it's kind of the center point for the town. They do have some additional requests as well in terms of mitigation. We think their letter is entirely reasonable and we're working on all of those requests from, you know, we can do better on some of the lighting mitigations, dark skies is a big deal. Where we drive is a big deal because then we have wear and tear on streets. So looking at that and seeing how we can, we can help and reduce our impact overall. You know, we want to make sure that we're a good neighbor and we align the things that we need to do with their goals and their visions. So it's still a process and we still have stuff to work through. But I thought their comment letter was excellent and we appreciate it. So that's all I had to say and I'll, I'll turn it over to any questions that you might have.
Questions? Questions?
I, I have a question. You talked about the roads, but how, how do you do that? How do you? Okay, heavy mining trucks, hundreds of them day and night and on the roadway, that is going to really tear up the roads. How, how do you address that?
So we don't have any heavy mining trucks, so this is an underground, sorry, I didn't do a very good job at the beginning. This is an underground mine.
I guess what I'm talking about is getting the tailings to where they have to go.
Ah, yes, so that would be done by pipeline. Yep, so that's done by pipeline. It would be buried along the entirety of the length. There are some critical crossings, Mineral Creek being one of them, and there's some critical habitat for an endangered fish, fish that doesn't actually exist there anymore, but we would avoid that and go and bury it and go underneath. But it's a really good point. So most of the traffic that would come in, there has been a traffic impact analysis. It would be light duty vehicles going along US 60, going through the town of Superior. But we do have some of, some of the truck traffic coming into the head office area would be on Main Street, just off Main Street. So there would be some traffic impacts, but also levels of service. So turning lanes would become busier, you know, at eight in the morning and at five at night when people are coming and going. We can't just do stuff to an A dot road, but we do have to work with them to make sure that those levels of service with the increased congestion doesn't end up causing a traffic issue. So that's, that's kind of those two elements.
Thank you.
Okay.
Freddie?
You had mentioned because of the subsidence, there would be a capturing of, of stormwater flows and replacing that. What, how do you propose to do that? What are the methods of replacing that captured water?
There's a number of different, different methods and we've worked on with the, with the town of Superior. So what we don't want is, we don't want water to go to the mine. Our ability to operate safely is really based on our ability to take water out of the, out of the mine area so we keep people safe. So we would want to de-water that area before we start mining. So Apache Leap Tough is the fractured rock aquifer which sits on the surface of Oak Flat and which Queen Creek goes right beside. So it's easy to put in some drain holes to drain that water out so it, so as stormwater and, and groundwater that sits in there would drain out and be directly, directed directly to Queen Creek rather than going into the subsidence area. The area itself is a bit of a bowl, but we can also design and engineer some stormwater diversion so that when it comes off the hillside, it gets diverted around the, the crater rather than going inside of it. We also do de-water, right? So right now we have the old shaft nine that we're actually sinking to depth to match up with the shaft 10 that we have down to 7,000 feet. That water we currently treat and we send it to farmers at New Magma Irrigation District, but we've been seeking a permit modification with additional treatment so we could put that water right back into Queen Creek. On average, at maximum mine life with the subsidence crater would be about 30 gallons per minute. So it's easy and it's, it's relatively easy and straightforward to replace that water. And if for some reason all of that failed, we have banked 300,000 acre feet of water that we are using for future mine use. Could always take a piece of that as well. So there's lots of options to put it back.
The, if can follow, the banked water is that CAP water?
Yes. Yep, yep.
And the water that goes to Penale, Penale County farmers or ranchers, you said, what's the commitment there for that water? Is it there for 100 years or?
No, so right now we give that water to, to farmers for free. As a result, they don't, they don't pump groundwater because it's a lot cheaper. We don't get credit for that, but when we are in operation, we would use the water that we de-water and that water would no longer go to them. Yeah, so the commitment is as long as, they'll take the water as long as we're giving it for free. Yeah.
Yeah, who wouldn't?
Yeah, and it's good for the groundwater, right? We've seen it's, you know, Arizona has some progressive policies, so groundwater levels in that area have come up hundreds of feet. Combination of the banking and the storage, but also there's a lot less farming and more residential in those locations. But that's, you know, it's an important area because that's going to be superstition vistas, which is an area of future growth for the Phoenix and East Valley. And so making sure that we have a good account of what water we have and what our impact will be when we draw off our water is important to a lot of stakeholders there as well.
Mr. Mayor. Now, Vicky, this is just a draft environmental statement, it's not the final, so it's basically everybody's in the negotiation stages. This is what we can do, this is what we won't do and that type of stuff. I read the Superior letter and I understand some of the issues that they're going through, but explain to me the filter plant issue. Bringing it, where's the filter plant at? It's going to be at the tailing site?
No, so the filter plant, the original proposal was, you know, where the, the old magma mine west of Superior is. That's where we've been doing the reclamation, that's where the concentrator would go. And then the Magma Arizona Railroad, which is the, the long winding railroad that Magma used to use to get their final product out when they used to have a smelter and a concentrator. So that's a 20 or 20-mile-long railroad that goes beyond Florence Junction and almost to Magma Junction. Just before that, there's a private parcel that abuts the Magma Arizona Railroad right of way between Florence Junction and Magma Junction. It was an old development that went bust and so we purchased it. And that's where we had originally proposed to put the filter plant. Because right on the rail, sort of far away from people, we sort of thought that would be ideal. The town has since said, well, wait a minute, why wouldn't you just put it just west of Superior closer to your concentrator? And then instead of putting it out through pipeline, the concentrate through pipeline, you would just have a filter plant on site and then you could rail it out. And our rail shipments would be night shipments. And then the town of Superior would like to use the rail for a daytime tourist train. They've had a lot of interest in a variety of different operators for this type of activity. We don't really care where it goes, it could go either way for us. So they would like to see that, we're happy to accommodate. We had a meeting with the town of Florence because they had wanted the filter plant in that location. But I think they understand and are, and are okay with sort of seeing the benefits to the town of Superior that are really closer to the mine, right? And, and closer to where the deposit is. So I think they're willing to, to work with us on that. But yeah, it's an important aspect of diversity and economic diversification for the town so they can have the tourist train.
And resolution is looking at this almost favorably or completely favorably or.
So we're waiting for the end of the public comment. Yeah, so obviously the draft EIS just puts out a proposal and here's the impact and here's what we've come up with and here are some mitigations to, to offset. You all comment on this and let us know, well, the forest does, you know, have we got it right? Have we missed something? And would you like something else to change? I think tailings was such a giant, you know, focus for everybody that nobody else really commented on the other stuff. And so now there's this feeling that, okay, tailings, we're cool with it. What about these other things like filter plant, which we didn't really comment on? So we are absolutely fine with putting it in either location. I think we'd like to wait and see the, the rest of the comment period, but if it's good for the town of Superior, we're completely happy with moving it.
Okay, because, you know, I, as you know, I've done some lobbying in Washington for Resolution Copper and you and I have many a conversations, so.
Got more cracks on my face. Great.
Well, we all do. You know, that's something that we can't avoid. But I will say, you know, through this whole process and it, you know, I started with it back in 2008, I believe, maybe. I think Mr. Reckless was the first manager I worked with and went through several of them. You know, it's, it's a key project for the community. It's, I even met with Senator McCain, which my father probably turned over in his grave when I met with him, but you know, I think he forgave me after a while. It is a good project. I, I, I have property in Queen Valley and I know, I know how important the, moving the tailings was for those people down there. They were pretty upset when it was going to be right across the street. So that's, to me, that's a positive and, and, you know, I, I look at the Superior letter and, you know, I don't understand all of it because I don't know a lot of what they're talking about because that seems to be a local problem. I think that the trails problem, trails mitigation would be a great thing for the Superior area because I like to hike over there too. And the fact that the tailings have been moved, I don't know how the people down in Hayden or Kearney feel about it, but it is.
Talking to them a lot.
Okay, it is way back there, so.
Yeah, I mean, they're still 20 miles from it and won't see it or feel it, but I think the important thing is that, you know, yes, the mine is in Superior and I think everyone says, oh, that's where all the jobs are. Well, I think the footprint is still big in the, you know, 10 to 20-mile radius of Kearney, Hayden and Winkleman. And so we need to make sure we direct our social investment down there as well. It's not, yes, there will be more jobs down there, but we also need to make sure that we work with those communities to make sure that we help them realize what their goals and vision are too, kind of like what we've done with Superior, right?
Yeah, so Superior right now is basically just putting up their requests for, to be reviewed by the Forest Service and you guys are looking at it also just to see if you can come to some middle ground on everything.
Yeah, I mean, we worked with them on a number of their, their comments. We're really, you know, really happy that they copied us on it so we could, didn't have to wait until the end of, you know, middle of November before we got it from the Forest Service so we could start working on those things now. So, you know, the water mitigations, they, you know, they clearly support the direction on tailings. The water mitigations are entirely reasonable and doable. The dark skies mitigation, absolutely, like there's no question we should do that. The request to kind of work with them on roads, on level of surface traffic and makes complete sense. The socioeconomics, you know, we have, we have an emergency services agreement with the town for $1.6 million for a defined period. We're going to need emergency services going forward, so we will bear the burden of our emergency services. We do not expect the town to do that, not at all. Kind of think of what else is in their letter, the filter plant, completely reasonable request, we would absolutely move it. And now that we've sort of worked with the town of Florence and kind of explained what's happening, I think they're okay with that.
So you've, you've met with the town since they put their letter out, their comment out?
We had been meeting with the town before that and so none of this is a surprise. They just, they just want to make sure that their impact is mitigated and it's completely reasonable. Yeah.
That's interesting because I was reading the letter and I thought, wow. I mean, that's, that's some pretty tough demands on a, on a company that's bringing, you know, so much economic benefit to the community by being there, you know, and.
Well, there's some things in the request that we can't do anything about. Bronco Creek with their unpatented mining claims and some of the things that they want to do, that's a different company. I can't change mining law, I can't change that other companies might have interests. So that aspect of the letter, and, and I think the town knows that we can't really do much about, but we can still continue to work with them. You know, the big deal is where our proposed mitigation is for recreation is where this other company wants to do exploration. So I think key is that those mitigations as part of this, as part of this draft EIS, if they get finalized first, then that exploration program needs to mitigate their impact to this mitigation plan. Really important, but. So that's one area that is, is, I, I can't, I can't control what another company does with their property. That's the only thing that's a bit challenging. They're asking for stuff and it's okay to do that, right? I mean, we've sort of disclosed the impacts and it's like, okay, well, we'd, we'd like to get a, we'd like to get a fair shake on this and I think that's totally fine. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I don't have any more questions. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. I have a few comments or questions. I, I know that this resolution might want to have a direct impact on our community, but we may have some indirect impact with maybe some housing and some, you know, some residency in our community. So we're within that 20, 20-mile radius. You mentioned Hayden, Winkleman, Kearney, I hope Globe Miami is included in, in any thoughts for, in, for, you know, input? Because I think it will affect our community. So, you know, I just hope that we're, we're considered in that, in those topics also. I read their letter and I understand their, their concerns, well, not all of them, but there is some concerns with them there.
Well, we want to really make sure that, I'm not born and raised here, but, you know, ultimately if I'm doing my job one day, I'll be replaced by hopefully somebody that's from this area. Or, you know, right now we have, Adnetto is a good example, right? They're, they're a globe-based contractor. We just, you know, we're doing reclamation on site and we've been working with them for a number of years to build their capacity. Man, they have grown and expanded and we just awarded a $12 million reclamation contract to them and they were competing against global companies. And, you know, their workforce is from San Carlos and Globe and locally, and so it's really important for, that's what, right? The jobs, there's a big jobs number. We need to put in the effort to make sure that local companies and contractors and people have the best opportunity to get the benefits out of this. So local contracts are really important, we do a lot of that, there's tons of room to do more. Right now we have apprentice program. We have about two dozen individuals born and raised in Globe, Miami, Kearney, Winkleman, San Carlos that we're training through Central Arizona College. They're getting degrees as electricians, instrument technicians, diesel mechanics. They work, they get paid, they're getting a degree. You know, these are really, these types of jobs are in high demand. You know, we're sort of, we're not, we don't yet, haven't got through the permits and approval stage yet. But these are the kinds of programs that we need to partner with the local community colleges and schools and build the workforce locally because people want to live where they're from. Their community is there and they can get a good job and stay at home. That's kind of the best of both worlds. We're not committing to these van pools, these commuter van pools. So the impact analysis on traffic does not include that. That's not something that the company is into. So, you know, we love to work more with Globe and, and other communities to make sure that you guys can harness the majority of the benefit. There's, I think, you know, the draft D I S just puts out a number, but there's like tremendous, there's way more opportunities. Housing, other economic benefits, making sure the jobs are people from here or we increase the capacity for them to get them. Got about 10 years before we really start the big heavy construction and production. So got lots of time to do that.
Any anticipation of any product coming to the smelter here at Freeport or?
So I'd like to say that I hope there's a possibility. Right now we're so far away from producing product, well over a decade. You know, smelter contracts kind of go on year-to-year basis. So I don't know what their capacity is going to be in 10 years. But our goal would be to try and place as much as possible in the three remaining copper smelters that are in the United States. We own one in Utah, which could take about 50% of what we'd produce. And the two local smelters, one in Globe Miami and the one in Hayden, Kearney, could take about 1%, so very small amount. But, you know, when the time's right, I think certainly having those discussions to see if there's availability would make a, yeah.
I'm sorry, just one more question. You say the proximity of your tailings is 20 miles away from Hayden, Winkleman, but you still have some residents, all ranchers and people that live out there. With the failures that you've seen or the mining has seen in the last, the last three failures, is there a difference in construction and how you're going to build that, that tailings dam?
Absolutely. The original proposed method was an upstream method. An upstream method is sort of like, just has a shell on the outer edge and it doesn't have a structural zone like a typical US Army Corps of Engineers water dam, right? It's more like triangular. It has a big structural zone. That's called a downstream or a center line, which is like a big triangle, big structural zone. And so the design is, is been, it is aligned with international, the most stringent criteria anywhere in the world internationally for tailings dam design. And those standards have been informed by these types of failures. So a couple of examples, a maximum flood, right? So we've designed for a maximum flood to contain and shed it. We've also designed for a 10,000 year seismic event. Arizona's never seen a 10,000 year seismic event, but it doesn't matter. We've designed to it, so we've, we've, we're designing this so it doesn't fail. Can't, yeah. The other thing I think is important is we've been having a lot of conversations with, with those folks. There's about a group of 10 property owners about maybe five or six miles down and then some further down as well. And so they're well-informed, you know, some people want to stay and don't care. Some people would like to sell. And so we're having those discussions with those individuals. And some people that want to sell don't want to go anywhere for the next five or 10 years and that's totally fine too. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. I really appreciate it.
So we have one action item and that's council will discuss and possibly give direction on the first quarter 2019, 2020 council strategic action plan.
Oh, I'm sorry, we better vote on that, huh?
Well, Mr. Mayor, no, we, we have a, I have a draft letter in here and I've included the, the proposed draft resolution, also included the Superior letter. I kept this very simple, focusing on the magnitude of the jobs and the skunk camp, the trail, uh, tailings. And it's up to council, if you're happy with this letter, we can improve this. If you'd like to add anything, we could do it on the fly now or I can bring it back in, in two weeks if you wanted to have anything added to that. But it's, it's council's prerogative. We'd like to get it done tonight, just so we, their deadline is the 7th. Our meeting will be on the 5th. And so it'd be nice to get it done tonight if you're ready. But if there's, if you, any desire for any more research or, or anything like that, we can still pass it on the, on the 5th.
Mr. Mayor? Based on the presentation that Vicki made, I'm happy with the letter that the city has, staff has come up with. I think that a lot of the discussion in the Superior letter is between Superior and Resolution and we really don't have any, you know, I don't think we should get involved in their, their plan because it is their plan and a lot of it is particular to Superior and not really to us. We will, I'm sure with all of the discussions and meetings that I've had with Resolution over the last 10 years, you know, we're going to get some leakage. Okay, Globe Miami, now all the surrounding areas are going to get leakage. But, you know, it stands to reason that Superior is going to get the brunt of everything and they need to make sure they're protected and everything. I think our letter supports Resolution, supports Superior and, and would be sufficient. And I would make, I don't know what the rules are. Can I make a motion that somebody said about waiving the rules, so?
Yeah, no, it'd be, you could make a motion and waive the rules as part of that motion.
I would make a motion that we accept the letter that staff has drawn up to send to the Forest Service or Resolution Copper. I don't know who it's going to.
It'll be in response to Resolution Copper, but it'll be sent to the US Forest Service.
Okay, and that we waive the rules.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Will we get a second? Okay, I didn't.
You got a second, Freddie?
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on the letter?
I think it was drafted very well.
Yeah. I agree with Mike on what the Superior concerns are really isn't. They have the direct impact. We, we're not going to have it like they are.
I shouldn't say this, but Mila might not be happy, but I think she'll be happy that we did support that, you know, completely. But, you know, Mila and I get along real well, so.
Any other discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor signify.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Any abstaining? Motion passed.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you. We'll prepare the letter and Mayor, you'll sign on behalf of council and we'll get it delivered. So thank you.
So now we'll go to the action item A. Discussion of the first quarter 2019, 2020 council strategic plan update.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, again, as we, we had put together the strategic action plan. We passed it as we passed the budget. The, the first three months, we've documented some of the actions that we've taken and prepared a lengthy PowerPoint, not PowerPoint, sorry. Bite my tongue. A lengthy spreadsheet that documents those first quarter actions. And, and some of them, you'll see that document things we've done. Some have things we've done and next steps that will take place. Next steps are described as things that we intend to do in the next quarter. Some things are dependent on other actions or indicated them. And then some, we've taken no action. There's over 50 areas, things that we could be doing. And so we're, we're chugging away at this, but this does help staff stay focused on those things that are important to, to council. We did prepare and if there's a single-page letter, I had to stretch the margins because I told everybody, we have the five key areas of topics, economic development, infrastructure, quality of life, and then public safety, both police and fire. And asked them to promote in a positive sense, almost like, you know, something that is, is easy to read, that you can read and share, that we could put on the website. And you have that. I don't, I think you can, you can read it. I don't think I need to, to go through this. But just to highlight that. And staff is very proud of the work they've made. And so it's, this is just touching on some of the things. But I, I think that you've had time to look at that. And I would like to just allow councils, all key staff are here on this strategic plan. And so just allow council to, first, if you have any change in, in how I'm doing this or how we present this, let me know. But at this point, if you have any questions, you can invite whatever staff is related to those, those areas and have them speak or answer questions.
I think the, the document you, you sent out was, was well-prepared, I guess. You know, we get to see where we're at and the projects and the goals we had. I think it's a living document. We're going to continue on this and every quarter we'll get this update on this.
Right. And, and in conjunction with, with that, so we'll do the three quarters and at some point in the four, in the, the following three quarters, three quarters in that, that next month, we'll, we'll get this out to you. We also did a, a budget update, just so you can see there, the budget is always tied to the strategic plan and, and what's going on there. So you have that information. So, but, but I know there's things that, that you may have questions where we're at. You know, however you want to, this is your chance in a, in a public meeting to, to, to discuss this with staff.
And we also have the opportunity to directly talk to these department heads as we, if we have questions as we go through the next quarter.
Especially on, on strategic action. You can, you know, information is, just catch up to the directors or make an appointment, come in. We'd be happy to address those issues or you can, on your own, reach out to them.
Question?
So we'll, I guess, well, okay, go ahead.
Did you find out what B R E is?
What was it? It's.
That's the Building Rural Economies Program.
Okay, thank you. I'm trying to learn all the acronyms in there.
We tried to, you know, we're trying to worry about space, but then we got the acronym nightmare. And so we need a, an acronym.
So it was building renewal?
Building, go ahead.
Explain what Building Rural Economies is.
Building Rural Economies is a program that, that we are under with RCAC and that's Rural Communities Assistance Corporation. And this is a three, a three-year economic development capacity building grant that we received from them in partnership with USDA. And it is an RCBG grant, a lot of acronyms.
We'll sit and talk.
We'll sit and talk. I'll, I'll just send you the list.
Yeah, just make me a list.
It's a rural communities block grant.
So what we'll do is there's five different categories. Does anybody have any questions for economic development at this point? Like I said, you can ask them here or you can ask them, you know, follow up with them as you move forward. Any questions, Charlie?
Has the assistant been cleared?
We, we are very close to bringing on board on November 12th, a person. Until, until they're here and onboard, we, we think we've come to agreement, but we're going to wait and announce that at that time.
But it's in the works.
It's in the works. We have, we have a final candidate that we're in negotiation with and we have a start date. And if, if everything goes well on November 12th, and I'm not sure what meeting will, will bring that person in. But yeah, we're making progress on that. So it's very close, but I, I want to, I hesitate to, to mention a name here.
Okay, my, my other question is the Michelson Building. So give us a little rundown of what's going on there because the community sees work and they see the county there and this and that. And, you know, people are asking questions.
Oh, absolutely. So last week, the county placed a, a big roll-off there to continue the interior demo on the building. So there's, there's more, of course, when you dig into a 100-year-old building, there's so much more work than you had originally anticipated. But I've been working with the county and with their, their assistant. He is, he is their superintendent in the Public Works Department? Is that his title?
He's assistant county director.
Okay, assistant county manager, specific to the Public Works Department. And basically he's, he's the project manager on this specific project. And we have met with the architect on the development of the interior rebuild of the, the space. The entire, not just the entire roof, but most of the trusses need to be replaced. And so, yes, quite an expense, but I'll tell you, the county's been an amazing partner through this project. They've invested, I, I can't even guess, tens of thousands of dollars prior to our, our funding from Freeport and the county match of 150. So they're, they're truly in this with us and they, they have crews there every single day doing demo work. And we've, we've partnered on more grants to, to do more of the outfitting of the interior once the, the structural work has been done. You know, once we can go in and, and get it to a, a place where we can move in. And so we've applied for another Freeport grant. It's for a women's development business grant to outfit it with all, all the most up-to-date technology that a business incubator wouldn't or could need. So we, we've applied for, Vince is going to be super jealous of this. Is he still here? I don't think he is. But it's a new plotter. Yes, new plotter and then interactive television so that we can have, you know, learning sessions. We can bring in speakers and, and host, host big events that we don't truly have the space now anywhere in the community to hold these type of meetings. So right now it's, it's a lot of teardown assessing, you know, are we, there has been abatement done on the building prior to when the county moved in. What was that, 15 years ago, council member?
Long time ago.
More, maybe close to 20.
For my time.
Okay, so, so there, there may be more brownfield work that we'll have to do in the building. So it's, our, our anticipated move-in date, it's still end of 2020 and that still looks good.
So one other question. One other question people have asked me and I have no idea how this structure is going to work, the, the space. The, are people going to be charged rent?
Yes.
Want to start a business?
Yes, and that's how this space is sustainable. So it's, it's through a membership and there, right now there's three tiers. There's daily access where you walk in, you swipe your key card because it's going to be open 24 hours a day, just, just like our gyms here in town. It's, you know, it's not, it's not new. In fact, it's going on with, with the two other gyms in town, Globe Gym and the Arizona Fitness. And so downstairs will be all open space. So you, you can work at any, any open workspace. And then there'll be a move up in level from there in membership. And then you will have, you can have the walk-in space, but you'll also have access to meeting rooms. So if you're wanting to work as a group or if you're wanting to host a meeting, then you have access to, to meeting rooms. And with all memberships, you'll have access to our business technology in, in the space. And then we'll also have a kitchen space upstairs and downstairs so that we can host mixers and things like this. Upstairs is all individual office space. And I think right now the footprint we're going to be able to keep because we do need to put back in a wall that was taken out when the county did some, some remodeling. It was a load-bearing wall and that's part of the reason why we, there is the issue of, of the trusses right now. So it actually adds an additional office space. So it's, it's 12 office spaces and those will go for, for a higher rent. We would like to keep the individual office spaces. And again, this would, you're over, you know, you would include your, your trash, a clean office space, access to all the business technology, wifi, and we'd like to keep that under $300 a month. But then downstairs, there's also going to be the downtown visitor center so that people who are curious just to, hmm, what is this cool space? They can come in, we're going to have our, our full line of city swag for sale there, information on all different types of events going on in the community. You know, I'm, I'm here in town. What is there to do? There's best, you know, we can give them a, a itinerary to, to fill their day. And then, you know, it being so close to Vida, the Vida is like the natural stopping point when you come into towns, like, you know, you always look for a coffee shop or somewhere cool like that. So it's just in the right location.
First of all.
It'd be two-story?
Uh huh, two-story.
Linda, are there any conceptual plans that have been published that we might be able to see or actually present to those curious people that want to know what it's going to look like?
There are, there are the ones that, and I've shared them here before, but, and I could bring them back and I can send them to everyone. And right now those are still conceptual because we're, we're kind of still toying around with the downstairs. The upstairs pretty much is set in stone because they're, they're all ready-built out. But downstairs, we, we would like to take down the, the bulletproof glass, the wall, and kind of just open that up, you know, raise the ceilings and expose all the HVAC, you know, kind of get that cool industrial look. And then have that all, all open space on the sycamore side. And then there will, there'll be three offices that I think we'll keep intact. And then there will, there'll be three offices that I think we'll keep intact on, on the wall that is shared with VITA. And so that would be my office, a larger meeting room, and then a, probably one other closed office space. But I, I would be happy to share that. And then as we move forward with the architect that we're working with, I'll share our final plans with you then. I think that should probably be about 60 days out.
Okay. Questions?
Where is this money going back to? So you said it's going to sustain the building. So is it going to be implemented in your budget then, within your economic development then?
Yes. And we kind of haven't gotten into that discussion quite yet either, but it, to sustain that building, the operations and maintenance of that, you know, the technology that will have to be updated, the programming that we would like to support out of that, anything to that would be going to support the ED department and the programs coming out of it, it would go right back into sustaining that so that we don't have to come back to council and ask for that type of support.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I, I do believe, looking at our schedule, we have room on the November 5th agenda that we could bring back a, a full presentation on the Michelson Building and the, the plan and, and the intentions and the partnerships.
That's one of my items.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm reading your minds.
So where, where are we with information boards? We, we talked about it, we talked about the dog park and putting up an information board as far as what's going to happen and pictures and things so that way the community is aware of what's going on.
More progress on the dog park, but I don't think we've talked about putting an information board because it, who's?
Because the, the poll hasn't closed yet. And so we're still working with the Dog Park Committee, which did get approval with the Southern Hila County EDC to become, we're going to become their fiscal agent. So as they fundraise, it will be handled by the EDC and that way they can assist the city in any of the development of that. But as far as having the design set in, in place, that's, it's not there yet.
But in, I, I think what we're asking is, is there ability to put a sign in front of the Michelson Building and say, this is co-sponsored by the county and the city and is the future home of?
When people walk by, they can see your designs, they can see what's going on.
That's a good idea.
And that, and, and I had talked to...
And the permits.
So yes, that, that is all coming, that, probably in January, that will be put up.
I also just want to commend you. You're doing a great job. I mean, Globe is moving in the right direction and moving fast. You're doing a great job.
Appreciate it. Yeah, it didn't, it didn't seem like this was going to come to fruition as quickly as it did. We toured a cowork space in downtown Phoenix after last year's Rural Policy Forum and that was, that was September. And then in, in May, we were fully funded by the county and by Freeport. So it's, it's been, it's been a fast and furious project.
Yeah, I'd like to commend you also, Linda, on this, you know, this economic plan that, you know, it was a vision and now it's, you know, we're, it's just evolving is all it's doing right now. And we're going to see those returns in the future. That's what we're hoping, that these investments come back. I mean, this cowork, cowork space is a big talk amongst other mayors and other, when I go to other meetings and to, they're waiting to see what that comes to, you know, as it comes to life, what that's going to be. Because they're also discussing it, because that's a big thing for the future is allowing that ability for the entrepreneurs to be able to come in and, and start their business.
Absolutely.
So, but yeah, no, I know there's been a lot of facilitation of different committees and housing studies and just all kinds of studies. And I think we're going to see now that we're going to be able to move forward and complete some of these, move these projects, accelerate them a little quicker. So thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions on infrastructure? That would be Jerry.
Correct.
Ready?
Yeah, I'd just like to see where we are with the feasibility study and, and expanding our, our sewer on the Highway 60, I'm sorry, 70.
Northeast corner?
Yeah, northeast, let's go that way.
We, we've been seeking funding opportunities for that. And we have some money in the CIP and we're talking to Kim Lee Horn about the possibility of doing that. So we're also talking to WIFA about some possibilities to get some forgivable money out there as well. So we've started, but, but we're not big into it right now.
Right. And remind me, how far are we from the Dream Manor from, with our existing infrastructure?
We have a sewer across the street. We have water to Dream Manor.
And, I'm sorry, I should have been more specific, with the sewer line.
The sewer line is at the drive-in. And we have, we actually ran it out to accommodate the PAD that was supposed to, the planned area of development that was supposed to go in there.
Right.
But it hasn't crossed the highway. And, and for this, from the city's perspective, it needs, needs to have some partners to cross the highway. So, and, and we've had those discussions, there's interest, but we need to do the feasibility study for the area to find out whether it's more feasible to, to upgrade our capacity in our own system or run a separate plant in that area. And that's what we really need to look at. And it's, and it's not one of those, if you build it, they will come. Because you better have a plan before you spend that kind of money.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Councilman Rios, sorry. The, one of the, one of the things that we're also in, in looking at, we have to be careful of gift clause just going, if we're just going across the street to Dream Manor, but if we're doing partnership to take it to the whole infrastructure, then we don't have that problem. And that's why we're looking for these partnerships. And, and quickly, Jerry, the, are we not, we're, to a point, we're waiting to see the outcome of the county study of the inventory? Does that, how does that play in? Is that a, a big part or a minor part?
Well, the county's doing a survey of, you know, what's best for the community. And they haven't presented that to us yet. We've been waiting patiently on that to see if that study will tie into our feasibility. If it does, it makes more sense to hire that engineering firm to do our feasibility study. If it doesn't, then we need to seek procurement through an RSOQ to, to go out and, and actively look for somebody to help us in that direction. So we've, we've been kind of playing a wait game to, to see how that comes out. But, but that study is, is not just Miami Tri-City, Globe, it's, it's the whole area. So that, that's, that's where we're going to head on that.
Yeah, we, we hope to build off of that study. And so to a point, we're going to benefit from the county money spent on the, the study of the current infrastructure so we, we can tie that new infrastructure on there. Because we believe there may be weak links inside our infrastructure and capacity that may impact adding, adding capacity, which may in fact, impact that decision, whether we go and, and, you know, want to line out there or do a separate plant.
It also depends on partnerships too, because we have ADOT in that area, we have DOC in that area, so depending, the county in that area. So, so it depends on partnerships and what makes more sense for us as a community.
And you're also keeping in, into mind the, the possibility of, of housing in the area as well, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely. It's one of the areas.
I didn't want to be real specific about just the Dream Manor, but they're the only business out there right now, but obviously.
There are other businesses out there, but, but there's also a huge amount of developable, developable land out there.
Right.
And if we, you know, with, with all the, the mining and, and the federal property and the state property around, we're restricted, we're, we're kind of bound by, through expansion. This is one of the areas we can't expand in. So it, it make, it makes sense to at least figure out if we expand, what it will cost. And if we have a developed, a feasibility of what it will cost, how do we pass that cost along? So, and that's kind of what we're looking at, isn't it, Paul?
Yes.
Is, is, is some sort of development plan for economic development in the northeast, northeast area, whether it be commercial or residential.
Probably a combination of both.
I think it will. I think it will. And, and it's going to be huge once we have a sewer plan in place to either get across the highway or develop a sewer plant in, in the area on the other side. Because remember, ADOT's not going to let you cut that road. So you're going to have to bore underneath of it and that's going to be a lot of money.
You mean, ADOT has a no-cut policy?
Wait until next, next time to get me started on that. So, yeah.
Charlie?
Talk to me about pavement.
So.
Give us a plan again about.
It's black on top? No.
Lots of dump trucks of asphalt.
So, so what we're finding, especially through this last project, is, is what we have currently is insufficient. You know, we, we milled the, we did a two-inch mill on the OD parking lot and we were down to dirt. Yeah. So, so what we'll, we'll do, and that gives us a good plan for the future because we beefed up to two inches and went back on there. John and I'll put a chip seal in place to build a little more structure on that. We, you know, we're correcting the mistakes of the past as we go, but we're also ahead of schedule. We're, we're ahead of the 20-year schedule that I gave you. And, and every time I get three extra dollars, I squeeze five out of it. So, you know, I, I think that, that the county's bridge is going to help us tie some of our roads together. I think economic development will benefit from our downtown effort into our asphalt. I think that, that the communities that we've also went out and did the chip seals in and, and are benefiting as far as property values and so forth. So I, I can see nothing but a win-win at this point.
Okay, so at that point, I have to say that my district is the oldest in this city. The oldest houses are in District 5. The most horribly-conditioned roads are in District 5. What, what does that mean for the?
So that means I have to wait till I get the water in. And there's no sense tearing the roads up right now.
Understandable.
But between, but between Freddie and I, we have tore up all those roads out there.
I'm not done yet.
Yeah, so.
Well, stop it.
So anyway, you know, but there is a plan for that area, but, but we knew that there was going to be major changes in our utilities in that area. And there was no sense in putting money then turning it right back out. So in fact, the Euclid is one of the roads it's targeted in the near future. So we, we will improve them a few roads at a time. If, you know, give me a blank check and I can do them all. So, yeah, so, but, but you're right, that is an area.
The residents that live in that district understand there is a plan.
So they're.
That, that area has been neglected for, I don't know, more years than?
In this, in this push, the, the WIFA money has gone in that area. And we have done not only a replacement of pipes, but we're doing a pump station in that area. We're, we're putting major infrastructure in that area. We're, we're going to protect that infrastructure by putting asphalt over it.
Ready?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I just got to reemphasize that, that point, that, you know, the roads is just the, the surface, it's the icing on the cake. But really what we're doing right now is we're replacing 100-year-old infrastructure or a 90-year-old, whatever it might be. And so we're providing a, a service of, you know, good quality water to all of the residents in that area with good pressure and sustainable volumes of water that, that they didn't have in the past. And the only way you can do that is by tearing up the road. That's the only way you can do that. And, you know, I, I just hope that they would realize that it's a process to do this kind of infrastructure. And, and the process is you, you, you have to fix all the infrastructure and then, and then put that icing on the cake. Because as you said, Jerry, you've said it many times, we fix a road and we have bad lines underneath it. And all that money is wasted, is just totally wasted. So.
So, and then that's why we're bringing the, the no-cut policy to you next, at the next council meeting. So we want to protect ourselves. We want to protect ourselves. So, you know, we, we have a plan. It is going to take a while to implement it, but I think that if you look around, you can see a lot of really positive changes in the city.
Oh, yeah. Comments out there.
Yeah, yeah. I, I especially, I especially liked Dave Cook's comment where, when he said that he was coming out of church and his daughter said, how does Globe get all the money to do this? So, yeah, I, I thought that was kind of cool because we, we had a plan and we worked the plan. And you're seeing even more of it today. If you look at OD parking lot, that is nice.
You got to go see that.
So, any other questions?
Jerry, on, just a, just a couple of questions on the CDBG funding.
Yep.
I know we voted on two rounds of Blacktop or Mill and Phil.
Yeah.
But in our next round, with Pinal County pulling out, we're not going to have the amount of money we anticipate we usually get. We usually get about 450,000. We're only going to probably get 50% of that now?
We get 490,000.
So we won't get that much in the next round?
So we'll get about 280, I think, is what.
That going to hurt our plans?
It'll hurt, it'll hurt. But we've, we've also become very creative on how we've used the half-cent excise and the HERF money with the additional HERF money that, that Dave Cook got us. That's going to help us out. That's about 200,000 a year. So, so that's, if you're, if you're figuring it that way, every three years, we're going to lose 120,000 or 130,000. But every three years, we're going to get 600,000 back. So that's why we're able to improve the paving system right now. So it is going to help. We, we still need the CDBG money because it gives us the ability to use it in areas we wouldn't normally pave. So, because it's free money. And, and so we would, we, we can go in and fix a road that, that maybe only has five residents down it. And, and because it's free money. And, and it needs, it needs done really, really bad. But, but we have 10 other that needs, if we're going to take it out of our coffers, needs it done worse. So that's what we're kind of looking at. Paul, talk about a little bit about the new position that's opening up. We're also going to clear the right-of-ways and the easements on, on these. That's something new that's going to happen next year is before we pave, we want to go in and make sure everything's clear. And, yeah, that's, that's not done now.
Is that going to include your common lines too then?
It will include a plan for the common lines. We don't, we, we can't, I, I really believe that we're talking millions of dollars to fix the common lines. So, so let's address the worst as we go and have a plan to fund the, the ones in the future. You know, the, I, I was shocked at how many common lines we have. And, but people are really cooperative when their lines back up. And it's their responsibility to fix them. So I, and I expect that we get a lot more cooperation from a lot more people as these problems arise and we can fix these one at a time. So I, I mean, right now, if we went in to fix a common line, there would be people that want us to pay them easements to fix their line. And there would be people who want us to shoulder that whole cost. But if they're having issues, then maybe we might be able to leverage that because they would be repairing it anyway. So.
Okay. Another question? Jerry, just one more short question. When do we anticipate our pool study to be complete?
That would be a Paul question.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, the, we had a preliminary phone conversation about what they found, but before the actual testing were complete. And, and they were going to give us a draft final once they got their test results. And, and I will run an email, because it was about almost a month and a half, two months ago that we, I think.
Was it?
Yeah, that we were on the phone and, and they said, but, and I've been kind of waiting for an email, but I'll, I'll send something out to them, find my, our contact and, and see where they're at with that. Because, yeah, we're, we're very curious as to what they found. You know, the, the comments that we heard, you, you really couldn't tell whether, you know, it was good news or bad news, engineers talking to engineers and I, you know, but, but hopefully we'll get a draft final on that very soon. And, but I'll shoot an email out.
Thank you. Any, any questions for quality of life? Public safety, police? Questions for chief?
Well.
Go, Charlie.
Well, I don't really have questions. I just, I just want you to, you've addressed most, but I think what's gone on in the years since you've been here is, is pretty awesome. It brought us light years into the. Brought us light years into the future, repaired a lot of damaged relationships that there were. Um, the only thing I don't see in this paragraph here is staffing. Talk, talk to us about staffing, because we're great with the school resource office. I, I hear nothing but good things about Officer Vidugo over there and the, excuse me, and the kids. The traffic issues seem to be better. Talk to us about staffing.
Mayor and Council, uh, Councilwoman Giles, um, currently, right now, uh, the allotment for sworn personnel for the city of Globe is 23. Uh, we are at 22. I thought I had the third, the 23rd one in there, but there was a snafu during the process, and so, uh, we're kind of searching for another position. So, having said that, on paper, we look really good. However, uh, we have one person that's on long-term, light duty, uh, because of some medical issues. And we have, uh, one person on, still in field training, uh, should be off sometime, probably in mid-November. And then we have three, uh, people at the police academy. We have one down in Douglas, Natalia, who should graduate, is slotted to graduate, uh, the 21st of November, I believe. And then two young men, uh, that grew up here that, uh, are in Yuma at the police academy there, and they probably won't be out of the academy until probably January or February. So, we're about 30-something percent down staffing. Um, we are switching to a new schedule, uh, this, uh, next month. Uh, the goal is, is currently, the vast majority of our patrol officers are working 12-hour shifts. Uh, the way it's built, it's, there's built-in overtime immediately, uh, because of the hours that they're working, uh, for coverage. Um, we are switching everybody to a 10-hour shift. Uh, we've done a number of different, uh, schedule studies to try to identify what is going to be the best. And we're going probably about six months earlier than we'd originally anticipated to this 10-hour shift. And then hopefully by next spring, once the last two, uh, young men are out of the academy and off-field training, uh, we'll go to what is going to be considered more of our permanent shift that really maximizes, uh, the personnel that is allotted. Um, there are some other staffing things that we're doing to try to maximize what we have, uh, whether it's the partnerships with the county or, um, San Carlos, uh, or Miami PD, um, or it's how we're allotting them, uh, for training and stuff. So, we're getting there. Uh, I think, uh, we've come a, a long way with staffing in the last 13 months, but we still have a ways to go.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Dale, um, we've had a lot of conversations about the, the 10-hour shifts versus the 12-hour shifts. Uh, I talked every time there's some news story about, um, police where either training or fatigue issue happened and it turns into a tragedy. We, we talk about this, but, um, talk to us about the, about the benefits of going to that 10, just that two hours.
There's a couple of things that we were, we were looking at, and, and the first thing that we have to make sure that we maintain coverage, proper coverage for the community that we serve. Uh, this shift does that, but, uh, it's highly important and at the top of our list to, uh, try to protect our employees, uh, from exactly what Paul had mentioned, fatigue and stuff. Because normally, if you're working a 10, and for those of you that have worked shift work, particularly as first responders, if you're working 10, you're working 12. If you're working 12, you're working 14. Uh, and then we're just putting too much of a, uh, a burden on them on a constant basis. Now, are there times that we have to? Uh, yeah, there are times that we have incidents that there's just no other way around it. But on a day-in-and-day-out schedule, that's one of the things that we want to do. The other thing, and one of the key, um, aspects of, of me taking over this position, one of the concerns was communication. Communication with the general public that we talk to and we serve, communication with other law enforcement entities. But it's just as vitally important to have proper communication within the police department itself. And so, this new schedule, it's going to allow an overlap on shifts where I'll have an opportunity. So, if I'm, um, relieving, uh, Councilman Lethem, we'll have about an hour timeframe in there that, uh, we can talk about what you'd covered or some of the concerns that you'd saw earlier in the day, and I could address them. Or, or it prevents you from having to take that late call, uh, because I'll be in to be able to take the next call so you can get out on time, things like that. So, it's those type of things that we're trying to alleviate as we go. And the other thing that we look at for this is we look at, uh, needs. So, time of service, um, high, high call sign times and things like that. High traffic times, uh, through the 60 corridor that runs through town, things like that. So, we try to look at all those things, uh, when we develop schedules. And they will fluctuate from year to year. Uh, standing here right now, I would tell you like every other cop would tell you that, oh, Friday and Saturday nights are the worst. Well, where I come from, uh, once we did the staffing study, we found that maybe Tuesday nights, we had to really focus in on a little bit. I don't know why, it was just that's where it was at. Um, we do know that we're running about 250 to 285 calls of service, uh, a week. Uh, and that's a lot, uh, with the staffing that we have out there. These, uh, men and women are extremely busy. Uh, they've been doing a phenomenal job, I think, uh, but we're getting there and they're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. And even though that we hear the train all the time, we don't think it's the train. So, we're getting there.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Chief, one question on your SRO. I know it's funded half from, uh, um, the city and from the school. Is the funding come through in the next year? I think there was some discussion about funding for the next year, the following year.
So, the last conversation that I had with Paul or with the superintendent is that they have applied. Uh, and my understanding is that if they get that grant, that grant is retroactive for this year, uh, moving forward. But I have not been advised, I don't think they know yet whether or not it is. We're solid this year for that, uh, and then this is an out-of-the-norm grant cycle. So, if they don't get this one, I believe next spring it opens up again on the regular cycle. So, we'll go after it again. And we will continue to go after it every time it opens up until we're successful. I mean, that's the ultimate goal.
Does that go from the school or is that a collaborative effort?
It's a collaborative effort, but the grant application actually comes from the school, but we provide data for them. Uh, and so, they, they're working diligently to get there. Uh, we've had great communication, uh, between the school administration and us, uh, and the, and the rest of the city trying to get there and then going from there. So, it's been very good.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, the, we, they, at, at the last minute, the state came up with possible funding for those people who wanted SRO this year, but hadn't applied last year. And, and we were under the gun to get pulled together and a grant application. And so, luckily, we had gotten, both had gotten permission from our, our elected officials to sign, but we hadn't finally signed that contract. And so, we were able to manipulate that contract and, and get it signed and, and go back and forth with our attorneys very closely, working with Jerry Jennings and his staff, uh, working with Bill Sims and, and Dale. Um, if this grant comes through, they will get a check for the full cost of, of one officer, $113,000. They will come to us to pay his full-year load salary. And, and, and so, they won't have to pay half and we won't have to pay half, and that'll free up some money so we can do other things that we need to do. Um, and so, but in having that, uh, in place, I think, I think the school district is seeing the benefit of having, um, this officer onboard. I, I don't know if they were totally sold on it before. I think with Officer Vidugo is just a, a gem of a, of a person, uh, you know, I think they'll find, they'll find, even if they don't get grant funding, next time they'll find that half that they need to. But, um, but we got our fingers crossed that they'll continue to get the grant funding.
So, Mayor and Council, a couple more things. Uh, Officer Vidugo's position, the SRO position, has, has benefited us greatly in a number of things, not just with the school, but I've, I've fielded a number of questions or concerns through, uh, different council, uh, personnel that, um, of complaints of traffic issues and things like that. So, Officer Vidugo goes there early, stays late, runs traffic. We've seen a, a significant impact on the reduction of traffic violations within and around the school, and we'll continue to work on that. He also does the Explorer post, and we're already reaping the benefits of that from some of the events and stuff that were out there. And then on the last thing, uh, unless there's other questions, uh, Councilman Giles brought up all the, a lot of the different things that we've accomplished over the year. I just want to say thank you again to, to Jerry and his crew, because it's not just the remodels and, and things that we've done with the buildings, but, uh, we were able to bring up some expertise, thanks to, uh, Chief Sean Duggan from the Chandler Police Department, allowing his personnel from the SWAT team down there to come up and provide some training. But in preparation of, of setting that training up, um, Public Works came out and did a phenomenal job in helping us out. So, John Angulo and his team, uh, actually really helped us out, which that type of stuff, that type of training is very hard to come by at that level of expertise. And it's a huge benefit to not just us. We invited Miami, Hila County, and the surrounding law enforcement agencies to participate. Uh, and they've got force-on-force training that was hugely beneficial to them, which is a stepping stone for us to do a much bigger training, uh, and fully incorporate FD. Gary and his crew attended the classroom portion of it and then observed, uh, the practical portion of it later in the afternoon. And, but the assistance from John and his guys on preparing the location that we had and then helping us with it is, is truly, uh, speaks volumes for the team effort that the entire, uh, Globe community and personnel are putting forth to be successful. So, I just want to say thank you to, to his team and publicly recognize the Chandler Police Department for their kind donation of time and energy in coming up and helping us step up our game a little bit. So, thank you.
And, and whoever owns the Safeway building to allow that to happen there is awesome.
Yeah, I, again, back to Chandler, uh, the head of security for them is retired Chandler sergeant, homicide sergeant, and their, uh, number two guy is, is a, is a good friend of mine, retired officer from Chandler. Mike Slapinski and Jim Hanterhand, uh, were extremely instrumental. But so was our own personnel, Shelley, in helping us work through the attorneys to get, uh, uh, the legal paperwork taken care of and the agreement taken care of to make it happen. So, it was, you know, everything came together nicely, everybody worked together extremely nicely. Uh, we will be putting some letters out from the police department, uh, upon my return from the conference next week, and getting them out to Safeway, City of Chandler, and the membership of the Globe family for all the efforts that they did to allow this to be successful training for my men and women of the police department.
A joint effort, well done.
Yeah, congratulations, and thank you for that effort. I mean, um, I'm sorry, may I jump in? You know, this is part of that quality of life that we all want, uh, with our first responders and our citizens. And, and for you to just keep stepping up and, and Gary with his fire department and, and, you know, you just keep mentioning all the, uh, the departments, you know, our Public Works. But it's, it's just, it's just so, it's, it's so inspiring to, to see and witness how the entire city staff as a whole can come together and make these kinds of things happen, and it's all for the benefit of this community.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And, and we feed the old people at the senior center, and everybody goes to the library to get their information. It, it's, it's all the department.
Thank you, Chief, appreciate it.
Thanks, Chief.
Last one, we have Public Safety, Fire Department, questions for Chief Robinson?
Give us some highlights.
The questions?
I, I don't have any. No, just, uh, just to say thank you to, to each of you. Um, this has been a good opportunity for us to, to, uh, review what goals we're looking at, what, what, uh, what things we're looking at for future. You know, to, to Southwest Gas again, you know, appreciation for, for that. One of the, one of the things that I put in, uh, the, the paragraph that I included was, was regarding the, the vehicle and our alternative vehicle or our, our alternative response of vehicle program that we're using. You know, our, we, we have the opportunity to, to maybe consolidate a couple of vehicles that were currently in the fleet and, and put it into one vehicle and, and look at that, uh, that alternative response. You know, we, when we look at what we're responding to, the, the number of calls we're responding to and how those calls are coming in, um, you know, we're, we're looking at statistics, or I am, on a, on a regular basis. And, and one of the trends we're seeing is that we're, you know, we're seeing about 20 to 30% overlapping calls where, where we have personnel out on a call and we receive a second call for service. Our auto aid partner with Tri-City, you know, that, that makes a big difference in that. But, but it also, you know, it also helps when, when we can become, you know, we can become very busy very quickly and, and to have that additional unit in service makes a, makes a big difference. And if we can equip that to, to handle some of our, our rehab stuff for, for major fires when we have, um, when we, we need air out there that we can refill our bottles with and, and, uh, and water and tools and stuff that are going to help us, you know, it, it makes a big difference when we have, when we have a vehicle that we can, we can put in service, use for that purpose and, and, uh, that will serve us well.
Mr. Mayor.
Ready? Um, you know, I just, I don't want to bring up a, a bad situation, but I have to, you know, this, the, the whole downtown Miami fire was a perfect example. I witnessed it. I was there, um, not as long as you were, but almost as long as you were. Uh, and I, and I just saw the coordination and, uh, of, of all the fire departments and, and the first responders, um, and even some of the city government, uh, personnel that were there to witness and, um, just to see how those, uh, under a tragic situation like that, how all those agencies can come together in, uh, without any really, um, preparation. It's, uh, you know, you, you have to rely on, on all your instincts and all your training to do the best that you can to, to preserve what you can. And that was, that was a perfect example. I saw how it all worked. Mayor was there that night, uh, Mayor and I spoke, uh, great length that night about a lot of things. But, um, you know, it was just, uh, again, it was very inspiring to see, uh, how your department, um, interacted with all the others and, and managed, uh, a horrible situation and, and really did the best that you could out of it. So, um, you know, talking about equipment and trucks and things like that and, and apparatuses. Uh, so, um, I want you to know that, um, you know, the Type III hasn't left my mind, it's still there.
Thank you.
And, uh, I'm, uh, I'm going to wait for the opportune time to bring that up again.
As was I.
I'm just kind of waiting to see what's going to develop with, with the department. But, uh, I think it's, it's something that, that, uh, this department really could use and utilize.
And thank you, you know, I, I do appreciate it. You know, it's a lot of, you know, it's, we talk about without a lot of preparation, but, you know, a lot of that preparation comes in behind the scenes. One of the things we've been working on, uh, and, and are in the process of, 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 uh, working to implement is some common standard operating guidelines. We've developed, um, through, through some of our, our captains and some, and some co-efforts with, with personnel from Tri-City Fire District, we've developed a, a book of standard operating guidelines that will, will, uh, work to even, you know, hopefully make it an even smoother process when we, when we deal with, um, when we deal with any type of incident, to, to allow us to, to implement a system that will best mitigate that problem, whether it be dealing with bees, whether it be dealing with a fire, uh, motor vehicle collision. We, we feel that, you know, we, we're in a small community and we have a limited number of resources. So, we have to, we have to be able to effectively deploy those resources to be able to, to deal with what we, what we're, we're called to respond to. And, and that's one of the things that, that we've, that Chief Rennen and I especially have felt that we need to do even better is to, is to get everybody on the same page and understanding how we do things. And the, the best thing, best way we can, we can do that is with a common playbook. And so, we're, we're working to implement that. We have the books developed, we have, uh, we have some, some discussions to hold on, on how we, how we implement that and, and getting, you know, getting people pointed in the right direction, starting with the, the leadership that we have, especially at the operational level of our captains.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, the, um, you know, Gary has a, a, a department run very strong, um, very efficient. We're, uh, you know, it's, uh, things go very smoothly, doesn't happen by accident. It's Gary's on top of it and he's taken what's been built and, and built upon that. Um, and when I talk about the city trying to catch up on documentation and, and technology, that Gary's in the, in the fire department is there, um, especially with their, their standards have to meet and, and stuff, as all departments do, but, but there's a lot, given the medical and, and stuff. So, uh, he's very good on the, on the technology and using that. When, when we're looking at what he's trying to do, he's fine-tuning a lot of things that, more so than some of the bigger lifts that we have to do in other departments. Um, one last comment, uh, Councilman Lethem asked me a question. We were talking, what would happen if the Miami fire had happened in Globe? And then I thought about it in two different ways. First, what can we do to prevent that? And, and Gary and I talked about, we, you know, double-checking that there are inspections and making sure that, that Broad Street is in compliance and, and that. But the other question is, is there anything we can put in place? Uh, Councilman Lethem worried about the, the burn... anything we can put in place? Councilman Lethem worried about the burned-out shells. Bad enough having vacant buildings, but having burned-out vacant buildings would be even that much more damaging to us. And we've already been on council, strategic action plan is looking at the warehouse laws and code to make sure that owners are paying their fair share. And it's got me thinking that on top of that is looking at ways we can make sure that they, that if something did happen, that they have the wherewithal to either fix or level or do something with the building, that there's an answer to that. And so been putting my thinking cap on and it's on my radar to ask some questions about that. But we don't, you know, gosh forbid, we don't want to have the Miami thing happen here, but we need to learn from others and be prepared. So that's on my radar and something that we're all thinking about.
I just have one question, Chief. On your SCBA's, I know that may be a big purchase item. We've discussed this in our strategic plan about the future, and I know you guys are seeking collaborative grants with Tri-City to try and get these. Is there any success there? What's our deadline on these SCBA's?
And as of this morning, I received a letter that we were denied funding for that project. It's something we're going to continue in. We'll reevaluate. Obviously, there's some conversations that Chief Rennen and I need to have. There's probably some conversations that we need to have with the city to look at potentially some resources for grant review, for stuff where we can determine where it is that our application is falling short in meeting the criteria that they're looking for. We went through our application this year pretty extensively. Felt, we felt we knew where we had some shortcomings, and we modified those and looked at them. And once again, we went all the way through the process. We didn't, you know, we remained in the process till the very end. Funding levels, funding levels weren't there to meet the demand that we had.
Is this for the breathing apparatus?
This is for breathing apparatus.
Self-contained breathing apparatus, Mike, for another acronym.
And it is, it is a, you know, it's a significant purchase when you talk about the cost per unit. You know, it's up around, if I'm not mistaken, it's up around $200 and something thousand for the units that we were asking for, and about $300 and something thousand for the units that Tri-City was asking for. Our goal with that project, it has always been to have both entities on the same, using the same system. We currently have different ones. You know, we want the ability that if we pull up on a scene, it doesn't matter what truck I pull an SCBA off of, I can put it on and use it versus, you know, versus having to cross-train and there being, you know, and not being fit-tested to that type of breathing apparatus. You know, there's a lot of things that go along with having different types, and if we can, you know, we're a small enough area that if we can put everybody on the same thing, it just makes it, it gives us that much more of an advantage, especially when we have people that show up off-duty or reserves.
Thank you, Chief. Was Council satisfied with this document that was given by Paul? You know, and just to recap, I think it was a great document. I think it gives us an idea of where we were at and where we're going. I mean, it really does.
It condensed all the information, too, because we've just been swamped with all this information. This was a very good format.
And what we'll do is we'll just add another column for the second quarter, and so you can see the first quarter, you can see the progression. It is a lot of information.
We're going to have quarterly updates.
Yes, quarterly. So we'll, in January sometime, late January, we'll have our second update.
This is very handy.
Okay. Okay, good, good. And then the briefing, which I think we'll find a way to use and have that available, probably on the website, we'll have that quarterly. I mean, I think we can put both these documents, the heavy-duty document and then the staff narrative that we have on there. One quick question or one comment. If it was, please, Council, we'd like to bring back the Michelson presentation, maybe on the second meeting in November, not so much the 5th, but I think the 20th, or I think it was the 19th or 20th. And just to give a little bit of stretching room because of some scheduling, some scheduling issues, or something else that we do have to bring on the 5th, and it may, I don't want, we're trying to keep the meetings to three hours.
We're there.
So, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, I'll stop at that point. Thank you, but I'm glad you liked it.
At the rate Linda's going, the Michelson building might be ready.
Yeah.
It might be done.
So next we go to late agenda items. Anybody have any? We didn't have any brought. Call to the public, second call to the public. I don't have any. Do you have any? Okay. Scheduling the meetings?
And just, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, just so you know, we'll be starting with the 1st and 3rd Tuesday in November and 1st and 3rd in December. We'll go back to the 2nd Tuesday in January, and that's going to give Public Works a window of about four weeks. They're going to take a stab at getting some work done on the council chambers. And so we'll see if that pans out. But no, it fits the vacation schedules and the holiday schedules, because no one wants to meet on Christmas Eve.
Can we put a PSA out on social media and also maybe our local papers so our residents know we are changing those dates?
Yes, we can, on the website, we can do that, and on Facebook. And on the scheduling meetings, we're also looking for possible dates for the joint meeting with the Town of Miami, and we're looking at the 7th, the 13th, 14th, 20th, or 21st. And so I don't know if Council has the ability to, any thoughts at this point about any of those dates?
I do.
Freddie, go ahead.
November.
Right now, I'm just looking, I'm sorry, Mayor, do I have the floor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. For me, the 13th and 14th are going to be challenging. The 7th, 20th, 21st are looking better for me.
So my thought is I would like it not to be, you know, the night after our four or five-hour meeting.
Three, three.
Three hour.
We haven't gone into executive sessions yet.
No e-session tonight.
Oh, that's nice.
Well, the 7th is, there's a day, our meeting's on the 5th.
The 10th and 21st is approaching Thanksgiving as well.
How does the 14th look? Did you, Freddie, say something?
13, 14th are.
14th open.
I can go 7, 20, or 21.
17, 20, or 21? 21, I'm open.
So. So we want to go, so should we take back 7, 20, and 21 to Miami and see if they want to lock one in? Do you have, is there a preference? Would you rather do 7th or the week of the, that week before Thanksgiving?
I think our preference is 21.
Majority here. I mean, you can pick the date. It's just a challenge for me.
So, well, and like I said, we give them some latitude. We definitely want to make sure they can get a quorum.
And this would be in the evening, correct?
It'd be evening, yes. Yeah, Center for the Arts.
Yeah, the 25th is Thanksgiving. 28th, yeah, the week ahead of it. We got five weeks in November. So send those dates out to them and then send it back to us? We good with that?
Okay.
Doodle poll?
What's that?
Doodle poll?
What is that?
We could, might have better luck.
No. This is what I do.
We'll see if, we'll email Joe and see what he knows about doodle polls.
Okay.
We good? I think we are.
Okay, future agenda items?
And so the future agenda item, we have the Michelson building in four weeks.
How about that there is no parking downtown? We have a good problem when we have these events, but people drove away on Saturday because there was no place on the west end of town for them to park, and especially motorcycles. I observed a group of probably 20 bikes. They can't park on Mesquite like this with bikes. You can't do it. It needs to be a flat downtown surface, and they drove away. They circled, and they circled, and then they drove away. And so later, I asked Tracy, what was up with that? And she said, hey, they had no place to park, and you know, that, sometimes we lose people. They were not from here, you know, they were a group that I think had wanted to come to that Cousins' Crawl.
And so.
So I know that's on our long-term radar, but let's not forget about it.
Okay, but did you want, did you want a presentation or an agenda item related to parking?
What's the rest of Council's thoughts?
I mean, I don't. I don't, yeah, I mean, yeah, we can surely define the problem.
We have to acquire property and do something about it.
There is no parking.
So we have a lot of parking that's not utilized. One of the things John and I have been talking about is better signage to our public parking lots. We have a lot of businesses and so forth that use our parking lots, and we need to sign those parking lots as public parking, so they're not private parking for those businesses. So I think we can come back, identify the parking areas with an overall map that you can look at and maybe show you some alternatives on signage.
Signage, that's a good idea.
So I can't make more room, except, you know, put asphalt on fine, but I think we can better utilize the parking that we do have.
Okay, so we'll put that in, and all of Council's in agreement on a parking presentation? Okay, okay. Gary, will this involve a PowerPoint?
Two slides.
Okay, five PowerPoints, three of them maps. I'm sorry, five slides.
How about three maps and no PowerPoint?
There you go. Okay.
So we have no e-session. Do I have motion for adjournment?
Second.
We have motion and second for adjournment. All those in favor signify. Any opposed, nay. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you for coming to our meeting.